Okay, we'll call this meeting to order in recognition of veterans' take. Do we have all veterans, please, stand and lead us in the pledge, please? Veterans, stand.
There we go.
Two, three.
Yeah, we all got to stand, but they got to stand first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for your service. So we'll call the meeting to order and the clerk will take the role, please.
Okay, Supervisor Kramer.
Here.
Clerk Reitzman, here. Treasurer, Delway.
Here.
Rusty Vance.
Here.
Rusty Pearson.
Here.
All present?
Board member conflict of interest statements, any?
No.
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 No. Approval of meeting agenda. I would like to move the bills.
Would you public comment first? That's next on the agenda, is it?
No, we do.
I'm sorry.
Meeting agenda first.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to move the bills, because we have one last bill, to 9E. And I would like to scratch 9D, the resolution, and table that until the first Tuesday of December at the request of the family. So they can attend. Any other changes?
I would like to pull the treasurer's report.
Okay. That'll be 9F.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion, we approve the agenda.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Public comment on agenda items, please. Step right up.
Is it done? Sit down. Now it's done? Okay. My comment is on the correspondence and the public consent agenda. Since the last board meeting, there have been several letters requiring board action that are not included in correspondence. The only letter that has appeared is the letter from our attorney that Mr. Kramer posted to the township website under breaking news. The one-sentence letter that started it all, quote, "Please be advised that any prior authorization for the use, reproduction, copying, or any other manner of disseminating photos, videos, or any other media created by Patrick and Jane McGinnis for personal or towns of use are hereby revoked." The key word here is "created by," and Mr. Kramer conveniently left that part out of his post. Patrick and Jane McGinnis did not create the kiosks. Therefore, the kiosks would not be subject to that letter. To summarize what we have said in letters and at other public meetings regarding the historical township kiosks. Multiple organizations and committees commissioned Joe Hines to create 11 kiosks, paid for with donated and grant money. No township taxpayer funds were used. We provided photos to Joe Hines with permission to use them in creating his kiosk designs. This was a non-exclusive, limited-use authorization, and we maintain copyright ownership of the photos. According to a text from Joe Hines, quote, "I don't claim any copyright ownership of my designs in work with any client," unquote. Therefore, the township owns the copyright to the finished kiosks and can do whatever they want with them. Pat and I do not have any copyright claim to the finished kiosks. We never did. In response to a different copyright issue regarding some of our video clips that Mr. Kramer used without permission, Mr. Kramer decided to remove the kiosks and hold them hostage under a misguided claim of protecting the township against a risk of liability for copyright infringement, citing the one-sentence letter described previously. Now, Mr. Kramer and the board is asking us to give them, and I quote, "all rights to the photographs which were provided as work for hire worldwide and in perpetuity relating to their uses, including but not limited to the sole and exclusive right to reproduce, distribute, exhibit, display, and otherwise exploit the photographs by any means now or hereafter known or developed in whole or part with the right to edit or modify and to secure copyrights in connection with the aforesaid uses as sole property of the township." This is not what we gave Joe Hines, and we are not giving that to the township. We are done playing games. The township owns the kiosks and the rights to do whatever they want to do with them. It is up to Mr. Kramer and the board, not Jane and Pat McGinnis. Thank you. And, Jake, these are the board correspondence that was not included. Could you please give them to the board?
Public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to talk about the bills and the treasurer's report. At the October meeting, you all talked about the skinny season and the need to have a workshop to discuss cash flow, and then talked about funding the CIP. You said wait until the workshop. At the November 2 special meeting workshop, we again heard about the skinny season and that the budget was frozen. Why are we in this position? I mean, we've taken an additional $200,000 for land sales, and we've never had that in the past, and we weren't in the position when we didn't have the extra money. So I started scrubbing the financial docs, namely the revenue and expenditure file. What I found was, in the general fund expenses, from December 31 through May 31, we were spending an average of $43,000 a month, which you confirmed, Jake. And then from June 1 to September 30, that average jumped to $58,000 a month, so an increase of about $15,000 a month. $45,000 shouldn't have been an issue, because we had an additional $200,000 from the land sales. Then I looked at the month-over-month reduction in the general fund balance, and I found that we blew through $475,000 between June 1 and September 30. So then I looked at the actual expenditures for those months and found that they were only $246,000, leaving $227,000 to be explained. I can't find it. I started looking at the revenues, comparing last November to current, and found the following. Tax admin fees, the county has recorded that we should have $32,402.83, and our report shows $22,541.69. So there's a difference of about $9,800 there. State reimbursement, summer tax, that's about $9,000. It's $250 a parcel that we should have held out before we sent money to the county. State shared revenue payments, those are paid, this is the big one, those are paid bimonthly, and the warrants come through Sigma. The money is direct deposited in the bank accounts. The schedule is online, you can pull it, anybody can pull it up, you can Google it, and it's between $50,000 and $60,000 each pay period. We missed the June payment, so that becomes a fiscal year issue. But we also missed August, and you mentioned that we were behind on October's. So that's an outstanding thing that has to be resolved. Charges for services rendered for parks, last year it was $29,000, this year we've got $2,800 booked. The school, little league, and soccer payments are $15,500. I don't know if they've been invoiced or paid, but they're not received. Contributions from private sources, that's normally where the fireworks money is kept. Last November, we had $5,700. This year, it's $2,372. But the barometer you guys have capped for donations shows there's over $15,000. So I don't know where that money is. It's not booked. So not including June's revenue sharing, we are short about $170,000. There's $150,000 of it, including June's revenue sharing, that has been deposited in our account. So I don't know how the books are balanced or the accounts are balanced, because you can't have those outstanding payments. Have it deposited, it should be showing in your checking statements, I'm sure it is. It always has in the past, but it's not in the books. That's it.
Public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. Hangar lease. Two meetings ago, we agreed to, actually, at a special meeting, we agreed to provide a hangar lease for a 10-year period, and the hangar owner is asked to speak to the board. Johnny? Step right up, John. Thanks for coming, John.
Yeah, you bet.
Glory's yours.
Thank you.
Can you hear me all right? My name is John Lapine, and I own a hangar at the airport here. As you just said, Bob, a couple of months ago, maybe in August, we had this discussion about the change in the lease, and you all decided to extend to me a 10-year lease, an additional 10, on what I've had in the past. And added to that, the cost of living increases based on the CPI-U every year for the next 10 years. Couple of things I want to talk about, and just a couple of things I want to ask you to change in that. But I think the first thing I want to speak to is the fact that I think it's only fair that you consider a 25-year lease. We've talked about this in the past, but the reason that I think it's important to add it to the airport is that new people are coming in, may come in to build a hangar, and I could tell you that in all likelihood, you will not get a new $300,000 hangar for a 10-year lease, especially with the CPI-U increase annually. I've got a hangar in Alma, and I have a 25-year lease there, and it's a fixed fee. It goes up $5, much like the ones you've seen here, except it goes up $5 every five years on a monthly payment. And so my hangar down in Alma, per square foot, is a little more than this. But that's not the point. The point is that we can't encourage economic growth at an airport, offering five or 10 year leases with those kind of increases. So I'd like you to reconsider that, if you would. Also, the fact that we spoke last time, there are 12 hangars there, 11 owners, and I'm the only owner with a 10-year lease. Everybody else has. They standard, I have copies of them, every lease looks exactly the same, the wording is exactly the same, the price is exactly the same. So, and the other thing I want to mention is that when I didn't pay up, didn't renew my lease at the end of last year, it became kind of an issue here, like Treasurer Delway said, well, it wasn't your fault that I didn't renew my lease. Well, you're right. But on the other hand, I didn't get an invoice either. So there's a clerical error on the part of this board to not invoice me in December like they had in the past 19 years. So it didn't really ring a bell to me. But the bigger point is that I volunteered to raise it 50% for this year. So I was paying $900 a month or a year, and I raised it to $1350, which is a 50% increase. And then on top of that, you're asking me to pay CPI-U increase annually, and I don't think it's fair. I really don't. So I'm asking you to reconsider that. I'm also asking you to change the language on two paragraphs, and Bob and I have talked about this, and he said he's not at liberty to change this. But if you, I can give you handouts for that, or you can just consider it for the next meeting. Paragraph 9 says that something like, if you ever decide to charge a landing fee, I have to pay it. All the other leases say that they don't have to pay it. So, and then on my lease, it says something like, I'll quote it to you, but anyway, it's something like, if my payment can only be, let me just read it to you. It's just, hang on just a second. I didn't expect to be called up here ahead of the agenda, so I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry about that. I got it here, John.
Okay.
Is it paragraph 5 you're talking about?
It's paragraph 9. And I can read it to you, too.
I can read it for you. Paragraph 9, landing fee, that if the lessor be required by any future governmental regulation or if any contingencies arise in the future whereby the lessor or its own authorized agencies adopt a general policy of charging a landing fee, then the lessee shall pay such a fee as additional rent provided, however, that other tenants of the lessor are charged a similar fee.
Right. So that's a moot point, because the other tenants will not be charged, because it says in their lease they can't be charged. So this is a pretty simple change, to make that paragraph read like the other leases, which would say, and would say transit airplanes, blah, 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 but there will not be a landing fee charged to the lessee, which is basically a quote from the other leases. And I'm asking you to consider that. Paragraph 33, which is really kind of sticky, says, let me read it here, this is what I have right now, "That the lease premises may only be used to hangar aircraft owned and leased by the lessee or other means of transportation when the lessee is using said aircraft. The premises may be used for no other purposes except permitted by the lease or by the airport rules." This is the part that's interesting. "On demand, the lessee shall present to the lease or documents of title regarding ownership of the aircraft or proof of private rental agreement. Any unused portion of the hangar may be used to store personal property." All right, so that means that, and probably you'd never do this, but it's in the lease. You're going to come out here and say, John, I want to see your title to your airplane. Well, I mean, really, I've never had that done at an airport before, except by the feds, maybe. And then, this is what the current ones read. It says, this is paragraph 33, under all the other leases, "That the lease premises shall be used by the lessee primarily for storage and maintenance of aircraft and related equipment and supplies. The lessee may also use the hangar for the storage of an automobile or other personal property of the lessee, which storage shall be for personal and not for commercial use. The lessee may sublet or provide rental of owned hangar space for other airplanes and personal property seasonal storage only. The lessee shall be prohibited from using the hangar for storage of aviation fuel except in amount to facilitate the fueling of lessee aircraft. Any other use of the hangar must comply with the airport rules and regs, as may be amended from time to time. If there is no airplane in the lessee hangar, empty space must be left available to accommodate an intact and fixed-wing aircraft capable of carrying a person." Now, what that says is, the original lease was written when my hangar was fairly small. My hangar is large enough for three aircraft, I used to own three aircraft. I don't, I have one. So if I have a friend that needs to house an aircraft for a week or so, or if you have somebody that flies in and ties down, and there's inclement weather, and he wants to put his airplane in my hangar, I would let him do it, but I can't do it according to this lease. And it just seems obsolete. So I'm asking you to consider changing paragraph 9 and paragraph 33 to read like the other leases. That's one request. The other request, as I said before, is for you to reconsider the idea of the 25-year lease, as everybody else has. Now, the problem, we had this issue last time, I think Bob said, there's no way you're going to get a 25-year lease. Well, it isn't about the lease time, it's about the money. I mean, do you care if I have a lease for 25 years on this aircraft hangar? It's really about locking in the price for 25 years. I think that's where it was coming from. You know, when you say you got a $5 every five years raised, that doesn't offset much of the increased expenses. But look at the expenses of your airport. I've got over $50,000 worth of equipment that I've put there, that I've sucked up the depreciation on for 15 years. Nobody's coming to me and saying, I did it. But the point is, where's the compensation for that? It's all volunteers. It's been volunteers since the beginning, practically. So you say you want a cost of living increase on what? On volunteer labor? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. So I wish you would reconsider doing that, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Is there any questions for John?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any?
No questions. Is there a motion?
I have a question. Like, what if something, God forbid, happened to you? What would happen to your hangar and, like, all of your equipment that you volunteer, that you use? Who would pick up the slack for that?
Well, my family would get it and take it home, probably.
Okay.
But as far as the hangar goes, it would probably be sold, or at least be tried to sell. By the way, this is another problem with the short lease, is that you devalue the little credit, because if somebody comes in and buy my hangar, and I say to them, well, there's a 10-year lease, or maybe there's five years locked on that 10-year lease, because that's what happened in Alma, when I took over my hangar. I took over the lease and had maybe 10 years left on the 25-year lease that could be renewed if I, you know, if I don't default, which I won't. So my hangar is, say, maybe $300,000 a hangar. So somebody comes in and says, I want to buy that, but I don't have to buy it up for 10 years and put that kind of money in the airport and then have you guys come back and tend, or the next board goes here in 10 years, say, well, we're not going to be doing it. That just doesn't make sense. So I would be forced, or my heirs would be forced, to say, well, then we're going to discount that hangar, to try and make it compatible to what the person wants. So I just don't think that's a fair way to operate. It doesn't encourage growth either. You know, this community is spectacular. And what, by the way, I mentioned, if I could continue for a moment, you have a beautiful video that I've seen online advertising Tuscaloosa Township, not one mention of the airport. You know, so there's people that fly in, and here's the other thing, when you limit it, we've had fly-ins here for our EAA chapter, I see some of our guys here, and we've had pink girls, and we've had fly-ins, and we might get 25 or 30 airplanes on that field. You think they're going to want to, I've flown into a lot of clients, too. You think we want to be a landing fee when we go to a fundraiser at an airport? Probably not. So it seems now, Bob and the rest of us, and they're working on trying to get airport rules and regs, this can run a beautiful airport here, but I think that you're short-sighted, maybe looking at those kind of things, and saying, we got to get that money right now, because we're a little ticked off that we've got 20-year, 25-year leases, that five cents to the five years. So that's, that's an issue that can be handled, but it's.
So I'd like to speak to that, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So imagine you own a house with a 2.5% interest rate. Are you refinancing today? You're not. Are you selling today if you don't have to? If you can put an addition on your house and stay where you are, you're making that choice instead of buy, instead of selling, taking up a mortgage at 8%. My concern is that we are digging a hole every year where taxpayers who have nothing to do with the airport, couldn't afford a plane, can't afford a plane ticket, are subsidizing the airport. And at $5 incremental additional fee every five years, that hole only gets bigger.
I don't disagree.
I don't think that the short-term lease is the long-term answer, but at some point, we have to get to a place where, you know, if you guys weren't doing the work that you're doing, the airport would be unsustainable, because the township can't afford to spend that money on equipment and hire somebody to do all the things that you're doing. And I so appreciate that you do it, but at the end of the day, we're still asking people at the township who are living on fixed incomes to support the airport. And until we can report to them that they're getting some benefit from that, it's very difficult for me to sit in this seat and not do what I can to try and true-up the red so that it makes sense for everyone. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I disagree, because I think what's happening here is that, is that you're thinking that the people here that can hardly pay the taxes, let alone, are somehow supporting the airport. They are, they're giving one mil apparently in their taxes, like we are, to the township, plus mils to the fire department, plus mils to the park, plus mils to, whatever it is. But there's lots of people here that don't use Defoe Beach. There's lots of people here that don't use the Cooperation Park. There's lots of people here that don't use the fire department unless they have a fire, but they, they're paying for all that. So then why not reduce the mileage on those items? I mean, that, that does not balance to me. I appreciate the fact that you want the people here who can't afford their taxes or can't afford an airplane or a park, but that, I, you might think I'm out of touch, but I don't think so. I've got, you know, I mean, I've been around, I just don't think that's, that's an accurate assumption. But even if that is, you're asking me to pay a 50% increase, and then on top of that, a 6.5% increase next January, which is a couple of months from now, based on a cost of living increase. I mean, that seems steep to me, when you consider that I've had a fixed number of $900 a year for 10 years, and I've offered to pay $1,350 a year for the next 10 years. That was in the original lease. But then, when I bought it to you, you said, oh, no, I want a three-year lease, I want a five-year lease. I mean, three years, really. So I just, that's, that's my point. But I don't disagree with the fact, there's a lot of people that can't afford to have that, and I'm blessed to be able to have it. I was blessed to have three airplanes. But that's, if it wasn't here, if I couldn't afford it, I wouldn't be doing it.
Well, it's, it's not lost on you that there are airports in this area that have waiting lists, and, but we're not one of them.
With what?
That there are airports in this area that are revenue neutral and have waiting lists, but we're not one of those.
Bob said we're revenue neutral for the next three years. He told me that himself.
Well, because we're doing the timber, right? But, but you want a lease longer than three years.
Sure.
The timber is supposed to go towards capital improvements, or not revenue neutral on the operational side yet. The timber should be put aside for capital improvements. The other question I got, John, is, I've been looking at the property values of all the hangars there, and they seem to be going down, not up.
I know.
Why is that?
Because general aviation is falling off a little bit because of the economy. So there's not as many people interested in flying as there were. I just looked at AOPA, Aircraft Owners Supplies, it's down about 18%, general aviation.
But how are they established? I mean, what comps do they use to establish your taxable?
I have no idea. I don't have any idea.
But, but again, you're saying, I think I heard you say, but maybe I didn't, that, you know, you want this to be a growing asset, something that grows in value, you know, that costs $300,000, yet we're not even close to that in terms of your taxable value.
Yes. You're placing, sorry, go ahead.
So my only question is that there's lots of, I'll say, variables here, and there's lots of inequities here, in terms of, as Jan was trying to point out, that not everybody can afford an airplane or an airplane hangar in this township. That's not really the issue. It's an interesting fact, but the issue is, we really need to have the airport become revenue neutral, both on the operational side and on the capital improvement side. And the airport was supposed to meet back in September, I thought, and they were going to come up with some sort of plan that's going to enable that to happen, and I haven't heard a thing about it.
I think that, there's been two hangar owner meetings, I had to sit in on the phone because of my injury, the last one that happened, but I think some of that has been decided. I don't know for sure.
And they come out there without, see, it's great to have meetings, but meetings don't pay the bills. We need an action plan that says, this is what we're going to do as an airport community, as your community, to get to revenue neutral.
I was under the impression with the volunteer labor, this was a few years ago when Norm was here, and he and I talked quite a bit, that the budget for the airport at that time was about $4,000. And that $4,000 was coming from hangar taxes, and probably that's about it, and lease fees. So that, that has escalated. Why? Because we've raised the expenses? We, I haven't raised the expenses. I'm not, I'm not doing that. So somebody's decided that they're going to have more expenses at the airport. I mean, I don't know why that's the case. We have volunteer labor, we have volunteer equipment.
All I know is, in the past several years, we've been paying about $13,000, taking in about $5,000 or $6,000.
Sure.
And there are things that need to be done, obviously, but my only point is, I think that ought to be revenue neutral, and that we ought to get there somehow.
John, I'd like to talk about paragraph 9 and 33.
Yes.
The, I don't know if you can see it this far, but this is what you're recommending versus what it was, right?
Yes.
So the dark.
I have copies for everybody if you'd like them.
Oh, it's in the packet.
Okay.
Number three again, Bob.
Yeah, turn three off, please. It needs new batteries when that happens.
Am I number three?
There we go. So I find that, personally, I find paragraph 9 and paragraph 33 that John is suggesting we change is more than reasonable, and I would move that we make the changes he's requesting to paragraph 9 and paragraph 33.
I would, I would second that one.
Is there any discussion?
Like I said before, the only thing that I'm concerned about, John, if something, God forbid, happened to you, who would pick up the slack for the airport with, you know, I know we've got a lot of great volunteers for the airport.
Right.
But you've got thousands of dollars of equipment.
Right.
That you have, lent to them to do the work, and you've been really instrumental in getting it done.
Not thousands, tens of thousands.
I would suggest that, since my children, I have no idea, it's not in my will, if you're trying to ask me, but my children.
No, I'm not asking you that.
My children know that I love the airport, they may just leave the equipment there. I'm not, I wouldn't, I might even recommend they donate it to the county, but I would say that's to be left for some, in the future. That. That, that isn't the point. For me, the point is that, I'm not a dinosaur, I'm seventy-seven. I am walking with a cane, and I look older than I am, but.
I'm not, I'm not saying that. I, I, you could go out and get hit by a car. I'm just saying, how are we as a small community going to fund that, you know?
Pick up the slack.
Yeah, pick up the slack, if, God forbid, if something happened. That is, that is my concern for.
This name starts with a D. Doug.
Yeah, yes, but.
Saint Doug.
I am not an expert on that at all, but I do know that the Alma Airport and many other airports get grant money from the feds. It's called Airport Improvement Projects. And that money, Alma gets a hundred and some thousand a year, but it's a bigger airport. But it's still a community airport. It doesn't have.
Well, you know how I feel about that. We need another thousand feet on that runway to really, from everything that I've learned from you all, I've learned it all, a lot from you guys. I got to tell you, I really appreciate it.
Yes.
And doing some digging on my own and everything I've learned from Chris and his Mark here.
Right, Mark's in the back. Yeah.
Are you hiding, Mark?
Yes.
All that hard work you did creating them lines for us.
By the way, I appreciate that. It's very visible from the air.
Oh, oh, yeah.
But let me just say about that. Norm Pratt put those lights in, and he begged and borrowed and got electrical contractors to donate the la, the wire. He borrowed a plow, plowed it in. He got the lights very cheap, maybe free, from an airport that was upgrading to brighter lights. That's how it works. And he and Ruth put those in themselves. And the, you know, you know what powers those lights? My electrical bill. Because we're, we're kind of a volunteer thing, so my hangar's the closest to the light pole, let's run it to me. You know, so I mean, nobody's complaining about that. We want a place to, and by the way, God rest his soul, Jerry Zemansky made the electronic control that, that pilots can turn on the lights from their aircraft. So five clicks on the mic button and the lights come on. And that was something he did free. So I mean, there's ways of getting pilots that love the airport are going to volunteer. So the EAA chapter in Alma mows the grass at the Alma Airport.
Anyway, what I was getting at is from everything you've taught me, plus talking to some other pilots that have larger planes, the key to that airport, in my view, is, you know, state and federal money to grossly expand that runway because we, correct me if I'm wrong, because you're the expert, we can only have a certain size aircraft because of the limitations of the runway. Is that correct?
Yes, but you'd be surprised that the airport, planes that are turbo prop, that can come in there. There's been a King Air, which is a, I'll be, a King Air three hundred, it's probably twelve passengers maybe, can come in, but they have reversible props. So they come in and they go, hmm, you know, you, you. All of a sudden, they're roaring, and they're coming to a stop. They can stop by the taxiway. And they have takeoff limits. But actually, there was a jet in there a few years ago, it shocked me to death. And, and we, by the way, this is just a side. Norm called me one day, he said, there's a big old airplane sitting in front of my hangar, because mine's on the end, and they think it's the terminal. And it was a charter airplane from Chicago that thought that was Harbor Springs. And he had a bunch of ladies on there, like nine passengers, and he came in and landed, it's just Harbor Springs. And he said, it's on a lake, that lake, you know. So, but it got, but it got in and out. So if a pilot is good, three thousand feet can be enough. But, but you've got the hill on the scare property that you'd have to deal with, you know. I don't, Norm talked about that before. If we sell that sand and, and extended the runway, I don't know that problem.
So in any event, we have a motion on the, and a second to change paragraphs nine and thirty-three. Is there any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Are there any other further motions?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we increase his lease to twenty-five years. I don't see a problem with that. He already volunteered to raise his rates by fifty percent, and we added the CPI index onto that as well. I think, I think we, we need to cooperate with at least the length of the lease. Unfortunately, your lease was the first one to come due.
Yes.
And, and so we kind of made an example out of you.
Oh, yeah, I thought that.
Yeah, yeah. But you were very cooperative by doing fifty percent on your own, too. But regardless, we're going to have to raise the leases as they become available, but we can't raise leases without them coming due. So, and yours was the first one. But I do think that we, it would be to everyone's benefit to give you some security with that lease, some security with your building and the value of your building, since it is attached to the CPI. I don't see a problem with that. And so to, I, I make a motion that we increase his year, the lease to a twenty-five year.
So the motion is increase the lease to a twenty-five year period?
For ten years.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Any discussion? So what you're saying.
There's a discussion. I have a question.
Yes, please.
Are we setting a precedent here? Is this, I mean, the point is that John's done a lot for the airport. He's invested a lot of equipment. It's needed to, in his case or his situation, perhaps justify this, this motion or motions. But are we setting a precedent here that says anybody else that comes forward deserves, you know, twenty-five years as well? I understand the reason for the twenty-five years, but yet.
If I could speak to that, I think they do because of the size of investment they're making in that piece of ground. I mean, remember, you, you own six thousand square feet of dirt. They're putting a three hundred thousand dollar building on that. They're not leasing a building. But the thing is that, can I speak to the issue about the cost of living increase? I looked at that pretty hard because it kind of caught me in the gut when you said that last time, and I really wasn't prepared to speak to that. Yes, we don't know what the cost of living is going to be, the CPI you would always study. I did look at it, the last twenty years averaged two and a half percent. And so if there was any way that I could know and you could know what you could expect every year, it would be really great if you could come up with a fixed CPI that you're willing to live with for the next, I don't care if you said it, we're going to check it every ten years. But the point is, this, here's the thing, I didn't get an invoice last year. Every year before that, we got an invoice, nine hundred bucks, we sent it in. I don't get an invoice, I don't think about it. So it went by me. But the thing is that if I don't get an invoice, how am I going to know what the cost of living is? And the cost of living, according to folks here last time, is a January one. Well, you don't get the January one, January one. You get it January, whenever it is, maybe.
You get it early February.
Early February.
Yes.
So if my lease goes from January to December, and I owe you money by January one, how are we going to know that? So, you know, maybe we change that to be, like I think you suggested, about maybe a March time, so you have time to put together that, but I need an invoice. And I, I didn't have it in this, but I did it in the way I showed Bob.
We understand.
I want, I want a statement that says, I need an invoice.
We, we've addressed the issue of getting invoices out. We've added a module to the accounting system so that we can do that, and it doesn't, you know, it's, it's not something that has to be triggered by someone remembering to do it.
Sure.
So, so that, I would say that issue is fixed. There was some discussion about getting all of the hangar leases synced up to expire at the same time during the year, and, and I don't want to mess with that because I don't want to amend everyone's lease and.
Sure.
Get people to resign and all of that. I, I do agree that a January due date or commencement date on a lease is problematic, and we probably should move that back.
Right. Okay, well, I'm willing to live what you would suggest. Maybe you could send me a redo of the lease, and we'll talk about it because I'm, I'm up there every weekend and.
We still got to vote, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion?
What, is your lease, does the commencement date on your lease, does it fall on January one?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's, let's vote on this first. Any other discussion? Janet, restate your motion.
Motion to increase the lease from a twenty, to a twenty-five year lease from a ten year lease.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I, I further make a motion that we change John's lease to be effective March first of each year.
I would support that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go right ahead.
So March first of which year?
This coming year.
March first of.
Twenty twenty-four.
And it was at what, you're moving from what to what?
So we're moving it from January first to March first? So we'll have to prorate two months of rent into that.
And you remember, it was stated that, that twenty-three was paid in full because I take, I haven't seen a check. You must not have cashed it yet.
Yes, of course.
Was it? Okay, I didn't, my wife didn't tell me it came through the account, so I don't do the accounting at my house. So, but anyway, she gives me allowance, you know.
And I would say on the CPI issue, it, you know, it's, it's a standard that everyone can point to so that we don't have anyone accusing.
Right.
The township of cherry picking numbers.
Yeah, because we're doing the same thing with the State Park.
Sure. I want the township to be successful. I plan on being here. My, my grandson said, because, you know, we're, we're a little older. We've had the cottage since ninety-one, and my twenty-two-year-old grandson, when he heard rumors that we might sell it, he said, you're not selling that cottage. You know, it's going to stay in the family forever, so I think.
But John, you're going to be around for a while. You're only seventy-seven years young, so, you know, that's the new fifty, just saying.
That's right. Once I get rid of that siding problem, I'll be jumping up and down. Anyway, thank you very much, and Bob.
Will we have to vote on this?
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
And I just, I just want to clear up one thing before we vote.
I'm sorry?
I just want to clear up one thing with John before we vote. I know that you had mentioned that we wanted the money and you thought it was out of anger. And I want you to know, it is not out of anger.
I don't think I used the term anger, by the way.
Okay, I thought, I thought you did.
No, I think you said that.
That's why I would like to clarify.
Yeah. No, I know that. I think it's frustration, though, that the board prior to you authorized leases that you particularly don't agree with. I, I mean, you can tell me I'm wrong, but I think that's pretty obvious, that all these folks got the same lease.
Well, and now we're doing the same thing to the next board.
That's right, exactly. Okay, anyway.
The lease isn't the issue. The issue is getting revenue neutral.
I understand.
So if we can figure out a way to do that, then everybody can have a win-win situation.
That's exactly right. And I hope that can be done.
When do you guys meet again, John, for airport?
Uh, that's up, Bob, and.
The airport guys, what, your committee, when do you?
Whenever, it's just sort of a pickup ballgame.
Hey, can I, I'm sorry. There, there is no organized group at the airport. We're all hangar owners, we've lived different places.
It's just an ad hoc.
It's an ad hoc.
It's an ad hoc group who, who literally volunteered to help Janet and I come up with some of these policies.
And we do not have a manager now. Andy resigned before that, Chris resigned, and of course, Norm obviously left.
Yeah, I knew, I knew Norm real well.
Yes, me too.
And he.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to.
Amendment lease.
Move billing to March first.
Yeah, move the billing to March first, yes.
And there was a second by Jan?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, John?
That's it. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time tonight.
I have.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Thanks for everything you do.
Bob, can I say one thing that I'm not out of line? When you were talking about twenty-five year, and Jay brought up saying, any future, I think it was you, Jay, that brought up, any future people that are building might have something different. I have two people right now interested in building. They're not interested in a ten-year lease. And I told them I would help them put together a lease similar to what the other ones were. Like if the board is going to accept a twenty-five year lease, both these gentlemen told me, forget it, I'm not doing, I'm not doing that. And they'd rather go to Harbor Springs, Pelston, or Gaylord, which does have twenty-five year
Well, we just approved.
I asked a question, and I was setting a precedent, and I asked a question, I didn't say that it had to be one way or the other. Secondly, the goal here is to get revenue neutral. And we aren't talking about getting revenue neutral, we're talking about every other issue that underlies it. So if we begin to talk about getting revenue neutral, you'll get a lot more cooperation.
All right, so moving right along, I have a point of order. We need to go back to number seven and approve the consent agenda. So, no, we did not.
No, we did not.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of bills and treasurer report.
I'll support.
Janice?
I'll support that.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, okay, next up is IT contract. I'm going to turn this complicated issue over to Deputy Supervisor Ron Odenwald.
So in May, we went out for bid for new IT service providers. We only got four bids. We have the three lowest ones in the packet. Every one of those vendors made at least one, if not multiple, trips here. They got the grand tour between the chief and myself. They looked at our equipment, they made suggestions, and ultimately came up with packages. The fourth one was so far out of range, they're not even included here, they were literally triple what we're paying now. So what's in the packet is the existing provider, which is VC Three. I don't want to get sued for libel, but VC Three is unacceptable at their level of service, and I'm sure the chief will agree with it. So regardless of what they would have offered us dollar-wise, I would have moved to get rid of them because they've hung us up to drive more times than I've gone. Weeks and weeks of response time, unresolved issues. They've had a terrible or massive change in ownership and management. We're not the only people affected by that change. It's a statewide, if not a nationwide, issue. This is not meant to be a disparaging comment to the subcontractors who perform the work because once we were able to get in touch with those contractors, they were almost universally acceptable. Chief's back there nodding his head. The issue is their infrastructure has absolutely collapsed. Their leading, literally leading clients, they probably lost two-thirds of their client base. So we had to look at other options because luckily, nothing that happened here was catastrophic. If something catastrophic would have happened, I have absolutely zero faith that they could have restored it within a reasonable amount. I think they could have shut us down for weeks on end. That's how dramatic-
Can I interject here?
Yes.
Since you're talking about not only low bidder, but best value, my major concern is backup. And as you took us through this process, what really disturbed me is that old server sitting in there has no RAID built into it.
Right.
So if that fails-
Has no what?
RAID, R-A-I-D. It's a backup. It's a bunch of-
It's a mirrored hard drive.
Yeah, it's mirrored hard drives that back everything up. And normal industry practice, at least when I was in the federal government, normal governmental practice is to have a RAID array that then backs up to the cloud. Unless you're on BSNA's new cloud-only system. We are not. Everything we have is software-based. So I'm very concerned that if that fails in there, it's going to be extremely difficult to get stuff off of the cloud.
And honestly, none of these bids involve replacing that or doing an upgrade, but that is part of the CME.
Right, so-
To continue in the discussion, VC3 provided us a quote that works out to $371 a month. They also advised us of what their RAID increases are going to be for the next two years, for '24 and '25. So we would be at $371 a month for the remainder of '23, which is almost over. Then it would go to $460 a month in '24 and $560 a month in '25. Now, keep in mind, this is with no even implication, let alone promise or guarantee, that the service would be restored to where it was when it was IT, right, when the prior owners were there. So in my book, they're out. They're out of the running, even though they are the low bid, but it's only by $10. So then the next vendor that comes in, and I'm ranking these in terms of, you know, dollars. The next one is actually a company that was recommended to us by Trudy Maves. She recommended a Boeing firm. That Boeing firm came out, chose not to bid, did not submit a written bid at all, but turned us on to this Traverse City company called Anavan. And Anavan has given us a bid that works out to $381 a month, $10 difference over VC3. I'm very impressed with the company. They've been here several times. They have in excess of 30 municipal clients all over the state that use BSNA, which is really our biggest demand, because we have to have somebody that supports us. We also have to have somebody that is both familiar with and able to pass the Michigan State Police Lean Counsel Clearances, because they will have access to that system. They have to support the MDTs and the police cars. Then we had a third bidder, a company called Affinity. And Affinity had kind of a unique pricing structure to where they wanted us to buy time in banks. And the most economical was to buy a 20-hour prepaid at $145 an hour. Their transition plan called for 30 hours of prepaid time. So, you know, we can't compare that apples and apples, because there's no hourly rate. It's prepaid, like buying a prepaid cell phone. I don't think that that makes sense for us. You know, it just, there's no reason to change from a monthly guaranteed fixed-rate plan to basically TNM, which is what that is.
So now, you're saying that VCI is the low bidder, but-
VC3.
VC3, but when you average their three-year costs-
Oh, yeah.
It's way out of the ballpark.
And the $371-23 rate is only in effect for one more month, two more months.
Right.
So-
So in fact, they're really not the low bidder.
They're at $460-75 a month for all of them. So again, my recommendation here is to approve the bid from Anavan. The quote that we have, I've prorated it based on them just supporting our server, but the rate is the same. So if the police department decides to switch from VC3, they have to give them six months' notice, I believe, and they can get on board with the same plan we're on. So, you know, again, we have met with these, all of these vendors, ad nauseam. And I am very confident that Anavan can do what we need them to do, what we need them to do.
So I know-
My recommendation is to take the Anavan bid, which is a $1,867 upfront cost and $381 a month. That is a no-contract rate, but we do have an addendum from them guaranteeing that rate for 12 months. So we don't have to worry about, "Sign the contract today, rate goes up tomorrow." We're locked in at that rate for 12 months. I have had a couple of independent people review their integration plan and their takeover plan and timeline that we just received yesterday, as a matter of fact. And everyone in the business that's looked at that has been very positive about their planning and their methods of coming in, taking over slowly, working with VC3, which they call the losing bidder in their correspondence. But I have as much confidence as I can possibly have with a company that I have no personal experience with.
So my concern is what the industry calls migration. Maybe you could explain that? And that is my number-one concern.
So yesterday, they sent us a detailed plan. It basically is a one-to-three-month window of making the transition from VC3 support to Anavan support. And they're very thorough. It's not pull a switch. It's not at all like the folks. Not where we throw a switch. It's very methodical. They've done this. They assure us that they've done this many times before. They have many of these transitions in place of speed.
How long was their migration plan?
One to three months. Could be as quickly as one, could be as long as three.
How long has this company been in business?
Anavan, I think 25 years. I, you can't quote me on that, but I think 25 years.
What was the cost? What was the cost per month again, Ron?
$381. That's just for us. If the police come on, their server is an additional $85 a month.
Did they give you any indication about when we replace that 2016 server? Will they be able to do that?
Absolutely.
They'll help us with it?
They'll do it. They will do all of it.
And did they agree that we need a RAID?
Yes and no, because the state of offline backup is getting to the point where that may not be necessary. It may be desirable, but not necessary. But I mean, I'm confident that whatever we decide, they can implement.
So in order to move the discussion forward, I'd like to make the motion that we consider, that we engage Anavan for IT services.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discuss away.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I've got some questions. So if they were, obviously, we're to engage them, what amount of work is required on our part to get all this transition done?
Other than cooperating with them when they're either onsite or logged in remotely, nothing. It's all on them.
Do you have a sense of the people that are on the team for Anavan? I have some familiarity with one of the other bidders, and I know that their bench is pretty deep. So I don't want to sign up with a company that-
So I ask those same questions. These guys support municipalities much larger than us. They support entire county IT systems. You know, I'm convinced, and I'm convinced at the qualifications and the industry standards of the management team, two of whom we met. The IT director for the company did make an onsite visit in order to put their bid together.
Yeah, I was impressed when he came.
And I just want to speak to the prepaid with IT ninjas. It's a very flexible system with them, because I've worked with them previously. They ask for the moon. And what I've seen them agree to is that essentially, you pay prepaid for the month. So if you know that you're generally using 15 hours of support, you prepay 15 hours of support. You can go online and see where your balance is with that. It is TNM, but you get to lock in that lower rate, depending on how much you're willing to pay for. I would not agree to pay for more than a month in advance. But that's, that would require another conversation with the gentleman in the affinity.
Well, and to be quite honest, in order to get their final bid, it was like pulling teeth. You know, Bob and I had, you know, we ran against a hard deadline a couple times. And, you know, much like Joe Biden and Barack Obama, the line in the sand kept moving. And, you know, I'm just, again, I don't like starting relationships that way. I was not impressed with the business acumen of that company, whereas Anavan has bent over backwards.
Sounds good to hear.
So I have a question. How many interactions can we have with them for $381 a month?
Many as you need.
So it's quote-unquote unlimited?
Unlimited, based on the number of workstations they support and the number of servers they support.
And do they have any record or any idea of what the time, response time is to certain things like getting somebody a email?
Their response time on a problem is two hours remotely and the next day for a person. Now, as far as the other things, like, and I know exactly what you're referring to, are the issues that we've had with VC3 setting up additional email accounts.
Right.
Ultimately, the goal is to be able to transition away from Google into MS365, where we can do that stuff, emails.
I'm not really happy with MS365 right now either, so.
Well, but, you know, Google's here, MS365's here, so I don't, I don't.
So there's no-
Again, you know, there's no written guarantee of that.
Right.
And you just have to take people at their word as far as returning calls.
So are they bringing to the table any other features or any other capabilities that- You gotta read between the lines to see what-
I don't think so. I think it's pretty much spelled out. You know, if you, if you look at the quote that was provided from them, where they're just detailing the services provided at the workstation level, endpoint workstation, fully managed IT endpoint for desktop and laptop. Included features include remote management and monitoring, antivirus, anti-malware, ransomware, zero-day attack protection, internet content filtering, DNS booking, file-level backup, including five gig of pooled cloud storage. That might be a little low. Windows patch management, common third-party application management, TM, unattended and attended remote support. So that's pretty thorough.
Did they mention VPNs in there?
No, they don't mention it, but it's a, we have at least one, if not two, down in the police department already. And we have, we do have some here, but there is point-to-point. We're using them with remote desktop login with RDP. Again, the goal is to be able to get away from RDP and make that an enterprise issue and not a laptop-to-server issue or a laptop-to-laptop issue.
One last question. The server's, the server's obviously got to be replaced.
In three years. So both of our, so police department's server is much newer than ours. More memory, bigger hard drive. However, still running server 2016, as are we. Three more years of support on that. So in 2026, the support for the server 2016 software goes away.
But that doesn't mean we have to replace the server. It may mean that we need to upgrade components in the server in order to install-
Everyone would recommend replacing our server.
Of course, they would recommend that. But that doesn't mean we need to do that.
But not PDs. PDs has been, is much newer than that.
But can we, obviously, get the hard drive, get the chips or the RAM and all the other things upgraded?
Sure. Do you want the laparoscopic surgery, or do you want me to go in and fix your shoulder? I mean, that, there's your example.
I'll take laparoscopic.
And I would say I would disagree with that. We just did that where I saved thousands of dollars.
We're three years down the road.
Two ways.
But we're going to be looking at a hard stop in 2026.
So we're not going to upgrade the server then?
I, no, I didn't say that. It's in the CIP.
Tell me asking, isn't that-
It's in the CIP. It's in the CIP. I don't want that to be the default answer to everything, but-
Right. I'm just curious what's in this CIP to upgrade.
I think it's $15,000.
Okay.
I have a question. So it says out-of-town travel, and then it's-
That's one time. That's for, that's for implementation.
Okay, so that's one time. So what is the monthly recurring fee of $466?
Except it's, where are we?
In the bottom on the left.
Because, because that's, if you look up at line two, where it says managed IT services server, that's for two. We only pay for one. The second one is on the PD. So that $170 figure turns into $85.
Good intention.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask you to help me summarize.
Not now. Well, I think Jan's motion is probably all-encompassing enough to engage that company.
I'd like to summarize and put in some of the key comments that we discussed here. I've got some of the notes, but I want you to help me with that, make sure we get it right.
You want that right now?
No.
Of the minutes?
Okay.
Okay, so who made the motion?
I did.
And who seconded?
I did.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm sorry, Jan made the motion. Let me make sure I get that down. Who seconded?
I did. Janet did.
Janet. No further discussion here?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. I make a further motion that this board assign the management of contract migration of the system to the deputy supervisor.
I second that, because nobody else wants to do it.
I'll support this.
Well, I do support it.
Any discussion? You're not allowed to speak. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ron.
Who seconded that?
Jan did.
That's right. I was ready.
I did it right.
Okay, community trash day. We had a very successful community trash day. I went out and got multiple bids. And the people that we used last time packed sanitation based on 35 tons. Was very reasonable. I think it was like $2,800, $2500.
$2,595.
Twenty, right. Yeah. And we have other bids, but the dates are also up for discussion and the number of times that this board would like to have a community cleanup day or a community trash day, or whatever you call it. I did talk to every single one of these folks. It is not unusual for townships of our size to have two a year instead of one a year. Totally up to the board. So I'll let you ponder that. Someone can make a motion. Pack dates, just let me help you out. Pack dates available, April 27th, August 24th, September 7th, September 14th. Little Travers, June, Little Travers disposal, which was the most expensive, is June 8th only. And GFL.
$629 and $914.
Right, so they were, they were the second highest. But there's nothing to say that you can't mix them if you like. It really is up to you.
The only thing I would interject is that in speaking or attending the Michigan Township Association meetings, I think it's fair to say that every other township and municipality in Chippewa County uses PAC.
Yep.
For this.
And then second is GFL. And Little Travers does mostly everything in Emma County, after talking with him.
And we were very pleased with PAC's-
Oh, they were great.
Customer service skills and assistance and arriving on time, doing exactly what-
And they saved the moose head.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They kept it.
Was it in the office?
Huh?
Is it in their office?
I have no idea, but they saved that giant head. Tell Ty they saved it. So do you want it once? Do you want it twice? Do you want it not at all? Who do you want to decide? Waiting to hear a motion.
And again, these dates fill up.
Right. I make a motion that we accept PAC for our service on August 4th, because that will hit some of the-
24th.
24th, because that'll hit some of the summer residents. April's too soon, September's too late. So I motion.
I'll support that.
Any discussion?
I think the September 7th. When is Labor Day weekend?
That's after Labor Day. It's the weekend after Labor Day weekend. The 24th is the weekend before Labor Day.
A lot of people start leaving.
Yeah.
The only-
A lot of people close their places down after Labor Day weekend.
Right.
I mean, they really like, get rid of a lot of stuff. I noticed when we were there, a lot of them had cleaned out their places after Labor Day weekend. You know, I think tend to go after that, but-
There's only really, what, two weeks difference there?
Yeah.
Well, last time we had it in September, correct?
Yes.
September 9th.
Yeah, I think September 7th would be, that's in my opinion, September 7th. I'd like a spring one, but April 27th, I feel is too early for people coming up here.
Before Memorial Day weekend.
Well, the motion on the floor is August 24th, so we need to vote on that. Is there any further discussion on August 24th? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. So August 24th it is. Is there any, excuse me a second. Is there any consideration for a second time, or do we just want to leave it this one time?
I'm not making a motion, but I would just leave it one time for now and try to publicize the outcome of it so that people know.
So the board has no interest in a spring cleanup?
Yeah, I would, but I feel like April 27th is too soon. We can hit snow, so, yeah.
If the board desires, I could go back and look for something for May. If the board desires, I could go back and look for something for May. Don't know that I'll be successful.
You said PAC doesn't have anything though, right?
No Saturdays. Suppose you could consider Sunday.
I think one time is good. We just started this up again and I think, but that's my opinion. We can come to make a motion.
Okay, well, if there's no motions, so be it. Next item, Blight Elimination Grants.
Okay.
Janet?
Make a motion that we paid Midstate Asbestos Removal Inc. $2,100 and Bizbale Forest Products, the $16,000.
For work already performed.
Yeah, per work already performed.
And the reason this isn't in the regular bills is because it's coming out of the general fund to be reimbursed by the grant. Is that correct, Jan?
That's correct, yes. And that's why we're bringing to the board today.
Right. Is there a second?
I'll support that.
I thought Kim did already.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I missed it.
I missed it too.
So it's Janet and...
So are we ready for discussion?
Yes, we are.
Okay, well, I'd like to let everybody know that the two Blight Elimination projects have been totally completed. They're 100% completed. I hope the people down in the Frontenac area are happy with the product that we have, the service. I think they did a really, really good job. Even came back two days later and spread some grass seed on there and tried to make it look good. So I was really happy working with all of my contractors. They went above and beyond, all six of them, three on each job.
They worked really hard to find that septic. They had trouble finding that septic.
They did. They had trouble finding it. They did crush and fill. They did not have to cap the well, which was basically a new well too. So that adds to the value of the property, having that there. I have almost all of the paperwork necessary to turn into the State Land Bank Agency. So I'm hoping to have that finished in the next couple of weeks. I'm waiting for some stuff to come back to me.
Did you want to recognize Mr. Foster?
Yeah, and I would like to recognize all my contractors. First of all, Mr. Frank Foster did, the cemetery building looks fantastic. We haven't been out to Oak Hill Cemetery, take a look. The door is not painted. It got too cool for it to be stripped down and repainted this year, so that'll be done next year. But it's got new siding. It's a cement block building. It's got the cracks from the unstable foundation got repaired. The foundation got repaired. New siding, new siding, new fascia, new soffit, new trusses. It was a flat roof before. It is now a metal trussed roof and it looks fabulous. It's got black metal and gray siding. It looks really good and I'm happy with it. They also, we took down some trees and brought in some field dirt and put grassy down there. So it looks really, really good.
And so it dries away.
We still have a little bit of work yet to do on that, but it's 100% better than what it was. And we're already using it for storage, so that's a good thing.
And if the board members aren't aware, Mr. Foster did this for us at cost.
At cost. At cost. He did not even make a profit on it.
Forty-five percent less than the next bidder.
Yep. So that was...
Very kind of him.
And all my projects came in ahead of schedule and below costs, so...
I did want to address one issue before we continue about the Frontenac property.
Yes.
Adjacent to the Frontenac property is another property with a small trailer on it. A lot of people in the community want that removed. The township does not have the authority under our Blight ordinance to remove that because it is secure and permissible under county zoning.
Yes.
If someone wants to complain about that, they can contact county zoning. But the answer I got was...
It's acceptable.
In that particular district, you're allowed to store your camping trailer. The only way we could get rid of it is if it was, the windows were broken out, the doors were open and it was...
Falling down.
And falling down and it was a danger to children, so...
Right. So that was on a completely different property, not owned by this particular property owner as well. So that would have been a whole different project, even if we could take it on, which we did not. And so our Frontenac property, I'm really happy with. Our cemetery property, all six contractors, I had three contractors for each project, were excellent to work with. They're giving us all the materials that we need to document. As a matter of fact, the State Land Bank Agency is actually asking for a whole lot more than what any federal agency would. So there's a big long checklist for each contractor and, but I have just about all of it completed now and just working on some tail end stuff. And then we'll be getting our reimbursement because the township did have to pay for this upfront and then we get our reimbursement. The better that I turn in the documentation, the faster the reimbursement is. They're saying if you have everything, they're looking at a 10 to two week reimbursement time. That is excellent. So I'm double checking everything to make sure we have everything we need before it goes in because it makes it faster for us. So that's all I have to report.
Do you need help with that?
Nope. Nope, got it.
Do you think you'll have everything together by the next meeting and turned in?
Oh, yeah, probably within two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Mr. Jake Way?
This is Mr. Jake Jake Way from North Star Gardens, my favorite garden center. I hope that plug's allowed. Jeff Jake Way, but everyone calls me Jake, so we're good with Jake Jake Way. Haven't been called that for a while. I have got an introduction. I've already introduced this to, or introduced this rather, to the DDA. And just coming to you guys and letting you know kind of what, a project that I am wanting to proceed with, but would need some assistance with. I don't know if you have a board that, I know you guys have the non-colored, but I don't know. If you guys wanted to look at things for...
Yeah, I'd be nice, thank you.
There are some color copies and things of that nature. So I just want to introduce again myself, Jeff Jake Way, North Star Gardens here in Indian River. My wife and I are third generation owners here in the company. The company's been around for 84 years now. We've owned it for 26 and have made some improvements here in town, mainly in 2017 with the addition of the coffee shop and the new garden center. And we employ 60 employees in the area, landscaping being our biggest division. We have some building and then of course our retail in Gaylord as well as Indian River and our Christmas tree location in Wolverine. But this particular plan, I want to introduce you to the what we're, you know, projecting to do, the how we're going to do it and then the why we're going to do it. So what we're doing or projecting to do. So we have the property right next door to our store going down to the Sturgeon River. And it goes behind Ken's Market, so it's a sizable piece. The total project PUD overlay that would happen, I've been working with Mike Turris on this and planning the zoning for the last three years and getting creative in how we can make things happen according to plan. And we've retroced things from there. But it's about five acres, just over. But it includes 12 cabins that'll be on the backside, as you can see on your print. From there, there's some retail that's on the front side. There'll be basically four retail, two of which will be food service and of course parking. We also have a greenhouse that we're going to bring in that ties in with the North Star Gardens as well as within that greenhouse, it'll be half greenhouse, half butterfly house to again attract more people and people that are walking from Burt Lake State Park or people that are staying there for that matter, that can come and enjoy. So I got a site plan there. I've got a more of a landscape plan and then I've got an architectural plan of the actual facade of the retail buildings. So that's the what we are projecting to do. The how we're going to do it, of course, we're in-house. I tend to do everything in-house. We built our Gaylord store, developed that whole piece of property. Same thing here at the Indian River store. Our team built it and they're phenomenal people, men and women that have been with us for a long time. And so that's how we will do this is, you know, except for subs like White Mines Electric, who Jeff Milner will definitely use, as well as plumbing in town with Scott at M&amp;M. So definitely using all of our local guys that have treated me fair and just and are responsive is what we'll go after with the contractor side of things. Why we're doing this, I'm now 47 years old. I'm not old, I'm not young. Again, we've been doing this for 26 years. We took this company over when we were 21 years old. My wife and I graduated from college and took over a little rundown Zephyr gas station and love to see Sally Snyder and John Lapine and so many more that have supported us from day one. And we're super thankful and appreciative for our customers in town and you guys believing in us and moving the store together to what it is today. This why is a little bit different. My daughter just graduated from high school. She's off to Northwood University. I'm going down there to get her MBA. And she wants to come back and run this. This was, she's got a big scholarship of $80,000 and this was her entrepreneurial dream that she presented to a board. She was the only girl in the top 10, so I'm super proud of her. She was valedictorian at her school and just all American, blue collar, hardworking girl. If you haven't met her yet, you should. She's just top notch. I want to keep her in Indian River. I want to have something that she'll come back to in Indian River that's more than what mom and dad's doing. That being said, this is a costly adventure. And again, I'm not a spring chicken anymore, so this is going to be some risk taking. Starting with Mike Turris, it continued on to Mrs. Lang, which then continued on to Lindsay at the MEDC. And she had said that we've never worked with Indian River before on any projects. This would be one we'd be interested in, but these are the things that you need to step through. And so I've hired Tom Johnson in the back from Landmark Group to go through pro forma and put numbers together. Because if they don't make sense, they don't make dollars. Again, I'm not willing to, you know, risk at the lower end depending on the size of the limitations of what we do. We have two different proposals, but it starts at 3.5 million and goes to 6 million if we do everything at once. It's a lot of money and it's money I have to go to the bank. As you alluded to earlier, at interest rates at 8%, that hurts. So the MEDC will not work with any projects anywhere in the state unless there is support from the local level. Mike is super supportive out of the county. He said he'll do whatever it takes. He loves the project. Talked to the DDA, they were in favor. Obviously, they can't say anything more than that. It's up to you guys and making sense of it and saying, no, I think this is good for our community or nope, I don't think this is good for our community and that's why you are where you are. That being said, they need to see a tax abatement and/or a sewer abatement, tax abatement being the biggest one. I'm understanding through the DDA that that's never been done in this township. And I think the sewer abatement's only been done once. Currently, right now, we pay almost $9,000 in taxes. I think the educational side of the tax abatement is nothing is free. So once this is done, if we do the lower amount, let's say the 3.5 million size projects, then our taxes will be about $56,000 a year. If I do nothing, the township, the school system gets $8,500 a year if I do nothing. That will continue and I've continued to pay it even though I tore the motel down. I didn't ask for any monies to be lowered. It is what it is based on the price that I paid for it. But if we, if you can help and MEDC can bring money into the system, then the system works and it's sustainable. If you can't, their grant money is out and the system just doesn't work. Again, I'm a calculated risk entrepreneur. If it doesn't again make sense, it can never, never make dollars. Reed's cabins across the river, you know, they did a great job with that. That used to be the same property as what I purchased. I didn't want that side. I didn't have the money for that side at the time. I just had to do the one side because I felt it'd be too much to bite off at once. They, I believe, have three RAUs total for all their cabins. And our side, we have four. The store and the coffee shop has four also, so we have eight for the overall property. I've got to make sure that, again, it's, there's common sense in the room to it all because if the RAUs jump too much, then this plan does not work. Not with right across the road, three RAUs. I think it's eight or nine cabins that he has there. Currently, we have seven cabins. We had 17 motel rooms. The 17 motel rooms have been tore down. The seven cabins remain until I figure out the direction that we are wanting to go again as a community. Tom has numbers of how many people we'll bring to the area, the average cost per day that a visitor spends in our community. He does this all over the state of Michigan for these grants, for the MEDC. He is a numbers guy in making sure that it, again, makes sense at the end of the day. But it was an introduced, again, this is an introductory for you guys to once see the plan, to hear the initial vision of the what, the how and the why. The why is again to, and my daughter come home and, you know, take over something that can bring, you know, tourism to the area and a place where people don't have to go to Harvest Springs in Petoskey to find a good dinner, entertainment, lodging. We can keep them right here surrounded by beautiful Mollet Lake, Burt Lake, Sturgeon River and Indian River. There should be no reason that anyone has to leave, but we need more projects like this in order to give them a reason to stay and spend their money here. And then the action of this whole thing is for you guys to talk about if this is even an option. And if you decide not to, or you deem that it's impossible, maybe Tom can reference maybe some of your concerns or things why you haven't in the past and we can move forward from there.
Mr. Johnson, do you want to say anything? Do you want to speak? Help yourself. Now's your time.
Well, if you have any questions, happy to answer. Been working with MEDC for 30 years around the state. I live in Boyne City, that's where my working office is and happy to work on this project. CRP program, I've always been successful. I've never entered down for a grant, but I've always picked ones that have high community impact if you look at my projects from the past.
What's a CRP?
Sorry, it's through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, a branch of our state government. It stands for Community Revitalization Program. Sorry for that.
No, it's fine.
Caught up in them.
So sir, for those that are not aware, could you explain the tax funding? A lot of people may think that, oh, you're not going to pay any taxes at all for X amount of years. Could you, could you talk about abatement, please?
Yeah, it's through Public Act 210 of 2005 is the one we're proposing. It's one of the more commonly used ones for units of government. The state on their grants require that. And what happens is under this program, that the roughly 8,000 per year they pay on taxes for that vacant lot would continue to be paid for the next 10 years. But as an incentive to help the development go through, they tend to be, what I see around the state is fairly cash flow tight, particularly right now with higher interest rates, construction costs. The appraisals tend not to keep pace with that. So there's less of the debts, bank borrowables, etc. and also affects cash flow. So the abatement helps with that as well as the grant. But essentially, so they pay the same taxes for the next 10 years. But after the 10-year period wears off, then it goes up and their SED goes to the rate that, you know, that whatever the assessor would charge. It's a $6 million project roughly, so probably 3 million SED, maybe a little less depending on how things are assessed in the...
So what are we proposing besides the 12 units? The 12 cabins?
The retail space.
12 cabins, there's four retail, two of which are food service. So like... So like outdoor pizza ovens, winery would be one of them, and then an outdoor store. My son loves mountain biking. He wanted to be able to rent bikes, repair bikes, working at an outdoor, camping, kayaking, you know, what would make sense for being out of river and next to Burt Lake State Park. T-shirts in the store that fit into that outdoor store.
Just out of curiosity, how are you going to get a liquor license if there aren't any left supporting?
Yeah, so that's our next hurdle. So, yeah, we've got a few things on the docket right now, working with Petoskey Farms, for example, where they have things that they're able to, you know, sell at the fitness.
Have you spoken to the DDA about one of their special resort licenses that are available?
So if we don't get any attacks or sewer abatements, this plan's dead in the water because the MEDC won't come to the table if there's no community involvement. So we have to start here, which is why this was an introduction, although we've been working on this for years. Again, I'm talking to the old man that used to own the motel for years since I was twenty-one. I would ask him every year, are you ready? Are you ready? Well, he was ready again four years ago and we made it happen. So I've dreamt a dream. I've put it on paper and we're stepping through the steps of availability of funds from the state. If it's going to go to Boyne City or Petoskey or Machina City or Gaylord or Detroit, why can't we get it to come to Indian River and actually allow our town to experience? And it's, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Lindsay said it's never happened here. Maybe it's never happened here because no one has given any kind of abatement from a local level to help make this go through. But I want to be clear with this abatement because, again, I'll have people say that, or at least think that this abatement is free, free tax money. This isn't. I will continue to pay my taxes I do now. Twist my arm at forty-seven to run a garden center and sell you annuals and landscape for you and make a living. That's what we've done and it's been good and I can do that the rest of my life. But if we can see that future growth involving with the state with some grant money can make our town keep people here, we at least have to take a look at it and say, if not for me, for someone else in the town, that these grant monies are available, but there's steps that we have to step through as a community to make it happen. And if you say absolutely not, we will never do that, that is okay. That is okay. I will continue to sell you annuals and delivery malts and my daughter will have to find her way, which she will. So I'm just wanting to see if there's those opportunities with grant monies that are available that is the only way that makes this a viable source for Indian River.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood.
For sure.
That all of a sudden, the tax money's not going to stop.
Yeah. If you do nothing, you pay the same.
You're going to continue to pay the tax money, it's just the increase won't.
Exactly. So, and then after the ten years, the increase then, you know, kicks in according to the SCV of the assessor at the time.
And then what I wanted to make sure, I was, maybe I wasn't clear enough, that since there are no liquor licenses left in the county available.
Yep.
There is a mechanism through the DDA to get a one-time license, I think it's twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yep.
Which is a lot better than paying somebody else a hundred grand for the same thing. And I think the, I'm not sure the DDA can help, but I'm sure we could help go through that process.
So, again, if everything were to go through, breaking ground would be next fall. I'm busy throughout, you know, especially the springtime, Fourth of July, you know, it starts to take a step back, but this would be to keep my guys going through winter time months as we build this out. It's an eighteen-month project. That's what MEDC mandates if they're going to put a grant to us, so this won't drag on. When we started, it starts, I get zero dollars from the MEDC until we give them a certification of occupancy, so a CO. So there's a big push to obviously get it done. They do that on purpose so they don't want a bunch of projects halfway done.
Sure.
But the risk on my side, I do this and it fails because of what's going on overseas and some of that comes here and it's an economic fallout. I go bankrupt. I personally don't think it's fair, if I'm throwing everything out and bringing more people to the area, increasing revenues for everybody in town, that we couldn't bring some kind of sense to the table and say, you know what, we're going to have to start doing this in order to make these kind of developments and projects make sense. But, again, no one cares if I go bankrupt. No one even will remember me in this room. The county won't care, the state won't care.
They will.
Township, maybe a few of you will.
That's not true.
There you go, thank you.
My mom will miss you.
There you go. But that's the reality.
My wife will miss your wife and your son.
Absolutely.
In fact, I'm ringing my mom tomorrow. She's ninety-three, two-year store because she saw a sale and we got to go tomorrow, so I'm telling you.
Customer appreciation on Thursday, that's where everybody, my wife's been working hard at it. So come on Thursday, a whole bunch of free stuff and fun stuff. But, but that's the reality. So I really don't want the township thinking, oh, yeah, Jeff came by and he wants us to give him all this money. You're giving me no money. And if that's the attitude, then that's okay. We have other projects that we can go through. I love Indian River. I just want to make sure everyone has an open mind of what this tax abatement is. I continue to pay the same. It just, it gives us time for the development to grow and actually be sustainable. Then, again, after that time period, then it comes to the normal SCV, which will be tens of thousands of dollars in tax revenue that I got to figure out and make sure, again, it's sustainable, which is why Tom is behind me saying, all right, here's the numbers. This doesn't make sense if you don't get this grant. And so this is the beginning start of that. And so the other items are definitely items on the list that we have to tackle as we go, but this one's the biggest and the first and the foremost.
So is the tax abatement for real and personal property tax?
So it's, and you can add to that.
It starts out with just for personal property, or real property, I'm sorry, not personal property.
You scared me there for something. So it's just real property? We would, we would continue, when you bring this online and you've got a pizza kitchen and all of that, we would tax the fixtures. There would be no abatement on those fixtures. Okay, thank you.
Will this project be year-round? In other words, once it's complete, will it be year-round occupancy and?
It will have to be.
Can you save the bell?
What's that?
God.
Yeah, so it will definitely have to be and that's how, obviously, occupancy rates go way down as we know.
Right.
Part of my daughter's, you know, her minors and digital marketing and she will have to put it to work and have to get people here for whatever it will be for winter time activities to make it a reality.
So the occupancy will be part-time, not full-time occupancy, or is that in the current as well?
Well, I would hope that full-time would be full occupancy and if you can tell me that would happen, that helps my banker and everybody.
A residence versus a vacation?
No, this is, this is vacation nightly, so if grandparents are coming up with grandkids, they want to be in a tent and the grandparent says, no, I'm not doing that anymore, they can come over, stay there, have people together, walk in.
And if you were looking at housing and in this context, it would probably be, you would be looking at subsidies, subsidized housing, right?
Absolutely. If this is like workforce housing, that's a different story, you know, on that side.
Not a great location.
Which is definitely needed, but not in this space. What's that?
How many square feet?
Each one of these units is four hundred square feet. So they're called Utopia Villas. You can look them up online. They're unbelievably beautiful. They're not your high-end, I'm sorry, they are your high-end, they're not your low-end, you know, models that you would see. But if you go to Utopia Villas, there's twelve of them, seven of them are different. So we do do some doubles, but there'd be seven different, so you can stay at different ones at different times, they'll have different names, that's all part of the whole marketing.
One bedroom, two bedrooms?
So it all depends. So there's always one bedroom in the main, there'll be lofts that would have, you know, like a kid's area that, you know, two people can stay. So these aren't, you know, two thousand square foot bungalows.
Are you going to have docks more?
There are no docks more. We have the whole area there that, you know, you could bring a boat into, certain section. The bridge is real tight. Yeah, exactly. Or get out with all the sand at the end of Sturgeon River right now. So not, not the purpose of that, but it could be if there's fishermen coming up wanting to stay there and put the boat at the river.
So my next question is, you know, what is the next step? I mean, have you got packages that you're going to present to the DDA and then to us? Or how's that going to work?
The next step, there's a couple steps to the process. One is the township would need to have a public hearing and then after that public hearing, set up a commercial rehabilitation district. This is steps necessitated by the act. And then after that district is set up, you can do it the same night or a different night, you could open up another public hearing to approve the tax abatement. And then that paperwork, we would submit an application to you in a state forum before those meetings and before those hearings. So you can see the whole, the whole application, it's just like two pages. And then that has to be forwarded to the state tax commission for final approval with, you know, the documented minutes and everything saying that you're approved.
I mean, I know you and I spoke on the phone and I recommended that you go to the DDA and I can't speak for the other four board members, but I would want to see a recommendation from the DDA on, on packages. I mean, are you going to have like an ABC or just here's Plan A, take it and leave it?
Plan A, well, for the, for both the grant and the tax abatement, we'll show Plan A, which is what is Jeff's proposal there. That's what we, well, it's his project, his risk, but that's probably the best bet for Indian River and for him to, you know, you'll get a shot at this grant. You don't want to do it in two phases and try to get it two shots. There's half the money there this year, there was last year, you don't know. It's been there for a long time, ten years, this community rehabilitation program, but that twelve units is a, you know, nice size, respectable size, and then the retail area that goes with it, so.
So are you going to come back to us or are you going to go back to the DDA first?
We'll go to the, if you need a recommendation from the DDA, that's your.
Yeah, so the DDA kind of said we had to come to you. So we kind of play cat and mouse and that's okay. You guys tell us, we kind of are coming to you saying, the DDA said we can't do anything, we're in support of you, but we really got to go to the township, which both of these are introductory openings, right?
I mean, I understand that, but this is just me personal, I can't speak for the other four, but because it's in the DDA district and it affects their financing, I really, personally, would want to get input from DDA because, I mean, they did a great job on the downtown, you know, and they got the best interests of the downtown at heart.
Yep.
And we got a lot of stuff going on and they're the experts. This is just me speaking.
So you want a letter of recommendation and support from the DDA?
Not so much a letter, just a discussion with the DDA that, you know, what do you think? What are your thoughts? What do you recommend?
Yep.
How long should it be? How much should it be? I mean, that doesn't mean we're going to accept it carte blanche. If any other board members have any thoughts, please speak up now.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, you mentioned a ten-year abatement. Does it have to be a ten-year abatement through the state or could it be less or more or what it? How does it affect?
So it can be anywhere from one to ten years. They typically won't accept a grant if it's, say, one or two years because they won't consider it enough.
Doesn't make sense.
And then in a competitive environment, in this economic environment, we typically ask for ten because of the, just long-term.
Because that's the norm?
Yeah. For most projects, when it's this competitive, absolutely. I see that, there's other programs like called Oprah, which is obsolete properties under Rehabilitation Act, and that's for core communities, like you have to be the county seat, so Sheboygan could get it, but Indian River couldn't. Those go twelve years and those are typically given at twelve by most municipalities I see, and then the non-core communities, I typically see these at ten. It's up to each community, it's just the, the five is, they have half the money they did literally than last year. It's the first time I've seen this drop in ten years, but it's, it's more competitive. Lindsay's mentioned that too, and we want to get something in front of them. As soon as practical, go, and I think to Jeff's point, I want to introduce it first, see if it makes sense, and then come back with a formal request, the written application with the details that we can present.
So before it goes to the DDA or even us, does it, it goes to MEDC first, I assume?
Good question. So with the grant, we have to have the abatement in place before they'll accept or approve the grant, so.
Okay, so if the DDA recommends a certain abatement and we agree, that doesn't necessarily mean that you'll get the money?
No, it's not a guarantee, but, but they will not process the application without that local support.
And how long do you think that process takes?
It could take about six months realistically.
So you're on a pretty tight timeline.
Yeah, it's a, it's a long time. It's one of the cleaner programs of all the grants I've worked with, state and federal. It seems like a long time, but the, in essence, they're granting our taxpayer dollars, so it's in that sense a good process. But it does, it does take some time. There's a lot of work, amount of paperwork, which is really appropriate for the size of the project and that. They have underwriters and everything else that look at it. So it's a very thorough process. They like projects like this, and if you've talked to Lindsay, you probably know that stimulate the economy, there's some redevelopment because there's some old buildings there like the motel, and it, this is a good one to stimulate new development because there's bed base, et cetera, being the cabins, call it bed base, and the hospitality tourism industry. So they like all those metrics of it and it, you know, ranks high with them, so it's a, you know, in general, it's a good project, but statutorily, they do require the local match and it's stated in their grant application on their website as well.
Not that it's any of my business, but can the state of Michigan help with this outlandish interest rate we're all having to pay? I mean, like, we're getting one point three and a quarter percent from USDA. Are they offering you anything decent?
For interest rate?
Yeah.
No, this would be a grant, not a loan. They do have some programs that are lower interest loans, but this would, would happen is the, it would need a grant because the debt service would still feed into the cash flow, so.
So out of the six million, how much could you get from them?
A maximum of one point five, about twenty-five percent. That's typical what I see in rural communities.
Unfortunately, that doesn't seem to be a lot considering the interest rate.
It's, you know what?
It's too bad we weren't back in the old days when it was, you know, two or three percent.
Absolutely, and I'll speak to it also. You guys approve a tax abatement that they say, yep, and they, they give the full grant of one point five, and then I still meet with the coalition, Citizens National Bank, and we're putting everything together and interest rates continue to climb, this is not a done, done deal. So I want everyone to be clear on that.
Exactly.
These are the beginning steps. When this started, interest rates were three and a half percent.
I know, that's why I asked the question.
So it's real. And, and again, if it doesn't make sense, it will never make dollars. The debt service has to be able to cover itself or why would I set my daughter up in something that she's going to pay on for fifty years and never make a dollar?
What happens?
But the banker makes a dollar and the tax guy makes a dollar. So this is real and so I'll calculate this through, but if I never start here, then this ball never starts rolling. So I want everyone to know that too.
So I heard you say that your goal is to put the shovel in the ground and begin this project next fall?
Mm-hmm.
And you would anticipate having a CBO when?
Eighteen months, they mandate that.
Okay. Oh, that's.
That's in the grant.
Got to have.
Yeah, exactly. You're just out on the grant and that makes life that much more fun.
Stressful, yes.
Are there any examples of successful CRP projects like in Boyne City or other areas that we could learn from?
Yeah, there's a lot. Boyne City, you can contact them. Petoskey has just done a few that I was involved with, but it's probably better you go through the, you know, represent private sector clients, but they're very public, they're published, they had public hearings. Petoskey has some, and there's several, I worked in New Baltimore that has one, that's a small community down, way downstate in Lake Saint Clair. It has a old downtown of just two blocks, very small community, but there's a few others. They, they were doing about a hundred million dollars of the projects a year. They're typically downtown or brownfield or historic types of projects, so they have a long, long track across the state. There's a lot you could look at. Lindsay could load you up with a number of them as well. There's a lot on my side, you know, on the northwest side as well.
We'd be interested in taking a look at anything you recommend. Number, number two, does the MEDC require anything from the township in terms of our best practices, policies, procedures, financial standing? Is there anything like that that we have to pass a test on?
No, just Jeff's, because the, he'll have to provide, show evidence of the bank supporter, bank term sheet, and then a bank letter commitment. They won't ask anything from the township, but your past resolutions and record of that and that's it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Would you help facilitate, do you come to the public hearing meeting and help facilitate and answer questions to the public?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll, I'll give a presentation usually, I don't know if you have the video here, a PowerPoint or some other presentation or handouts, to show everything, kind of walk you through To show everything, kind of walk you through the process, the act, what we're doing, how we meet the metrics of it. I'll have the applica, I'll give you the application in advance of that meeting, so that everyone has a chance to look at it. That's our thing, but we'll go through that step by step, the whole process.
I have a question. So the way I understand the abatement thing, because we've never done that in this township, so this is something new. But the way I understand it is, basically, we would be just expecting the same taxes that you're paying now. No changes, even though you're changing the property, it's not being assessed as you go. So therefore, you know, that's saving you capital money to put back in to make sure that you can finish that project. If you finish the project within 18 months to two years, then you're still having the tax abatement for another eight years, if we do a 10-year. And so we necessarily wouldn't be losing any money, because you're gaining capital to make sure that it's viable during those years. So that way, when it does jump, you'll have the capital to be able to pay it. Is that, is that the way I'm understanding it?
And he can address this even more, but that's the reason for a tax abatement. That's the reason why they do them all over the world, I'm sure. But definitely in the state of Michigan and the United States. You got to see the big picture at the end, right? If there's another 40,000 people coming to something that you're doing, in turn, giving money to the gas station, and the ice cream shop, and the library, whatever. There's reason to then say, you know what, we'll invest monies here from the state of Michigan, or from the state of New Hampshire, whatever, on those different states. To say, yeah, we're going to invest in this to make this a reality. That's the gist of this whole thing.
The thing about, I like this, that you're looking forward thinking, 20 years down the line, 10 years down the line is nothing. 20, 30, 40 years down the line is where you're at. That's where this board needs to be as well. And I think we're starting to see that, we're not just reacting to like what's happening today or this year. We're actually trying, we're doing a $14 million sewer project.
Soon to be 21 million.
Yeah, but, but, you know, we're working on that, and we've been working on it for like four or five years now. And you're in the same boat, and you're getting a thousand down there, I'm telling you. You have really improved that whole corner, people come from all over, they go to North Star. I wouldn't go anywhere else but the Christmas tree, and everybody knows that. So, and I live in the woods, I can go cut my own if I wanted to. But the thing of it is, it is true. But the thing of it is, your ideas always pan out, I mean, always. And you've improved the community by doing that, and I thank you for that, because you're putting your money where your mouth is. And you're investing in your own home, and I like that.
Thank you.
And I will do some more investigation on this abatement thing, because this is all new to me, and I'm sure to a lot of the other people on this board. But we're willing to learn, because we have to be able to figure out ways to move the township forward in a positive manner. And this is a very good example of it. I have one other question as well.
So let me put you on the spot, if you, if it's not personal. Somebody comes up to you, they're all cranky, oh, Mr. Jake Way's getting a special deal. Address that. Tell them why, tell them why the special deal is good for us.
So here's the bottom line, I've alluded to this, I do nothing, it stays like it is. And I pay my taxes, and we do nothing. Everyone has to understand that this is my family, and I know I said no one would care if it went bankrupt. I know a lot of you would care if I went bankrupt. This is a risk for my family, a risk that I do not need to take, a risk that's for the next generation. This is a turtle game, it's one step at a time. Progress, not perfection, is my motto. We're trying to make progress for Indian River. If we can't do that, that is okay. I got 21 acres right next to KOA over in Petoskey, and I know Mr. Kaiser and Bear Creek Township would love us to do something like this in their community. That will be my last song and dance of my life, probably, if this one goes well. We'll mimic some of this and then head that direction. But this is, this is my love, this, Indian River's been good to us. This is where I want to start, this has been my dream since 21 years old. But again, for someone to say, oh, you're getting a handout, man, I'm going to have a payment that's in the tens of thousands of dollars.
Well, just remember to keep this.
That I won't sleep at night for a second. And I know there's some other successful business people in the room that can fully understand what that risk feels like. This is, this is step one, to seeing if we can make this happen for Indian River. But it has to be, which is why I've hired him on and I'm paying him tens of thousands of dollars. To make sure, I can lose 25,000. As soon as I do this, I'm going to have 25,000 a month in interest, if this interest goes crazy, so continues to go crazy. So I want everyone to keep that in mind, and if someone wants to shoot arrows at me, go for it, this is not easy. Anyone can do this, that's the other thing I want to say. Not everyone can own this property, because obviously I do, in the same way you can't own John's property, because his grandson said he'll never sell it. But, all that being said, anyone could go to the bank and convince them to give me this amount of money and do this anywhere. This is a risk. But there's channels that if we can bring state funds to Toshkaer Township, why wouldn't we at least put some common sense on the table and say, boy, we need to at least look at this? And this is the guy that can make this happen for an education, if not anything else, if it doesn't go through fully at the end of the day.
So to move this along, so we can finish up here. What exactly do you need from this board and the DDA, right here, right now, tonight?
Could you just run through the steps, so we can get it moving, so we can get you in there?
Yeah.
Where monies are.
Is there anything you need from us, right here, right now?
I think, let me see if I'm paraphrasing everybody, you and the, you know, government here. The, I would say, one, probably a green light that Jeff's asking, does this make sense to you? Because he wants to go forward, and there's a lot of time and money for himself, and the architectural renderings and everything else that he's doing. In general terms, does this make sense? Then, I think from what you have asked, that we go back to the DEA and ask for a resolution that we can represent. Maybe when we go back with that resolution, after that's obtained, I'll come to you with the formal application. Because it sounds like you're open to it, but I don't want to speak, I mean, you have a whole process and public input and stuff.
Sure.
So that's for you guys to decide. But if that's a thumbs up, or just, you know, go ahead, we'd like you to come back and pursue this. Then after you get that, we're going to ask you to hold a public hearing to establish the Commercial Rehabilitation District. And then take the next step and award a tax abatement. And we will put in our application, we'll ask for 10 years, to have the maximum competitiveness for the state. So we will do that, but those are the steps that we'll need from you. I can outline that, provide you copies of the act, and provide you some summaries of it as well, that summarize it like in two pages. Plus, you might want the act as well, with all of its, you know, like 12 pages, it's probably good to have. So I can provide you all that information. And also anything else, we can probably tie in Lindsay somewhat too, and get you some additional information. So want to be able to be there to provide you what you need, but those two steps are what we need to submit the grant application. So that's.
I'll outline that for you, Bob, and he'll send this to you tomorrow, that way you can send it out, so you can see line by line of what we need to make it a reality.
Board, I'd like to make a motion that we request that the DDA provide us a short brief of facts and circumstances and a recommendation to this board.
Well, I'll second that. We need everybody on board.
Is there any discussion?
Is there, is there any reason why we can't make this happen more quickly by just having a joint meeting with the DDA? Because, because yes is good, no is okay, but maybe we're still thinking about it, stinks.
Are you asking me, or each other?
I'm asking the board, I mean, if you're done.
Well. Go ahead.
I'm Dan Nyvel, I'm on the DDA.
Yeah.
Jeff brought this to us, we were very receptive of it. Even though we are getting our funding from tax increases. But you have to look at the big picture, you know, we're looking at 10 years down the line before he's going to start paying taxes directly. But he's going to be making money for everybody.
Yeah, because money turns over.
So it's going to, our problem was, we have never done this, we didn't do a tax abatement, we didn't know what to do, we can't do it, of course. The board has to do it. So, I mean, we discussed it, we are all in favor, we did ask Jeff to give us an idea of what he was doing. And as far as the tax abatement, for how long and everything like that, and bring it to our next meeting. And then we were going to discuss it again. But overall, and there's two other board members here, I don't think I'm speaking out of term and saying, out of turn and saying that the DDA is in favor of this project.
Did you vote?
Pardon?
Did you vote?
No.
No, we did not vote, because we had no.
Okay, that's fine.
I agree. So, and I'm just.
I read the minutes, and you're correct.
Yeah.
And I'm just proposing that if we're, if we're generally receptive to at least continuing this discussion, that rather than having you bounce back and forth and do all of that, that we just have a joint meeting, special meeting, knock it out, get it.
When's your next meeting?
For him.
When's your next meeting?
Monday, the 20th. Right?
Monday, the 20th?
Yes, yes. So it's two weeks away, two and a half weeks away.
Can you be ready for that?
What was the date?
Can you be ready for that, for the 20th?
13 days from today, maybe not.
I'm going to be in Texas, I'll be flying back on the 20th.
But can you, can you have Jeff bring what you're proposing to us?
Absolutely, I wouldn't have the answerability, if that's a word, that he's going to have within this, but maybe.
Can you zoom it?
Can we, well, can we do it later that week? Is there a possibility that you're back on the 20th?
I don't think you can do that for a public meeting.
No, you can't.
As long as you can with him, but you can't do it.
He's not a board member, so we can have.
Yeah, Bob, I'll ask, or he'll see, and I'll let you know tomorrow when his plan arrives in Texas, or from Texas to Traverse City.
Because I think what we're talking about is calling a joint special meeting on your regular meeting.
Just get it done.
I mean, it's going to expedite it for him, it's going to make it a lot.
I have no problem doing it.
Yeah.
I just got to type it out and post it.
Okay, so what are we voting on?
Great question.
Yeah, I withdraw my previous motion, and I move that this board approve a joint meeting with the DDA on November the 20th at?
7:00.
7:00 p.m.
And that's a Monday or a Tuesday?
Monday.
It's a Monday.
We need a second.
I'll support that.
I thought you would.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we'll see you on the 20th.
I have one question, before you sit down, what about the future of our fountain out there? Is that?
The, I don't have it in, the drawing, but Bob asked the same thing. Someone's got to give me more history of why I'm going to keep a cracked up old fountain. Put in a whole new development, so I can scoop it up and take it to your front yard, and you can redo it.
If you talk to my brother, he'd probably say yes.
And that, I will.
So I'll tell you what, I'll go to the library and get all the books, and bring it down to you and show you.
And I'll load the phone up and bring it to your front yard.
No, 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 it's got to be on public property, it's got to be on public property.
Thanks, Jeff, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. So we'll see you on the 20th. And sir, Mr. Johnson, is it?
Yes.
If you want to call in or zoom in, we can make those arrangements.
Okay, and I'm going to try to get the earliest light I can here.
Well, I mean, it's no problem, just.
Zoom, okay.
I'm calling in, so I don't want you to have to make a special trip.
Looking forward to it.
Okay. And Mr. Nyvel, thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Sewer operations contract. As we all know, let's go back a little bit of a history. We had a previous operator that we got a new one because of all the violations. And I will tell you, from my experience, we haven't had a single violation since the day Meeden Hunt took over, not a one. Even when we were accused of having PFAS, which turned out it was a lapse problem. Normally, under normal circumstances, I would say, and they wanted a three-year contract, by the way. I would say that we should go out and bid a three-year contract. But these are not normal times, because we're right in the middle of 16 or 14, or whatever the magic number is, Phase 1 and Phase 2. And I just don't think it's personally wise for us to change horses in the middle of the stream, when that's hanging right over us. So when Meeden Hunt approached me about a three-year contract, I told him about my concerns. They still want a three-year contract. They originally wanted $7,400 or $7,500 a month. Right now, we're paying them $5,900 a month, plus call-out, what they call call-out fees. I negotiated them a little bit to get a rate of $6,500 per month. So I wanted to tell you what was in the original $7,500. It was the operation of the plant for the commercial district, plus providing assistance to PEI for the design and execution of building the plant. And what I proposed to them was, hey, look, we don't want the commercial sewer district subsidizing Phase 1 and Phase 2 construction. I would prefer that you break it out. So X amount of dollars for the commercial district, X amount of dollars for Phase 1, X amount of dollars for Phase 2. So what they came up with in this packet is that they would raise our fees from $5,900 a month for the commercial district to $6,500 a month. The reason that they need the increase, it's in your packet, is that with this new discharge permit, they have more tests that they have to do every month. And you can see where they told us that in the scope of work. And then what will occur is anytime PEI, or the USDA, or us need their assistance with Phase 1 or Phase 2, they will bill that at $80 per hour, per phase. That way, we get our money back from USDA and the EPA if the project goes forward. So I hope I've adequately explained that.
What do we have to send in to get our money back?
Well, every time we get a bill, if it's for Phase 2, I file a claim with EPA to get 62.95% of that back. With Phase 1, we won't get that back until we close on the loan. On the other amount in Phase 2, above the 62.95%, we will get that back if and when we close on the Phase 2 loan with USDA. So right now, the township has paid well over $400,000 in engineering and legal fees for Phase 1 and Phase 2. We will get all of that back if we proceed when we close on the USDA loan. Now, we can do a three-year contract if this board shows desires. When you're bidding out, when you're doing something that long, I personally would bid it out. But I just think with everything that we're going to be going through for the next year, now is not the time to change. I have a very successful relationship with this company.
I agree, it's a successful relationship, I appreciate the hard work that they do, and I'm going to engage in discussion without a motion. So we have a bid, we have a policy that says we should bid it out. I know it's inconvenient, I know that it's, it's brought with all kinds of problems. brought with all kinds of problems, but that's our bid policy. So if we're supposed to bid it out per the policy, we should bid it out.
What exactly would we bid out? A one-year or a three-year?
I, I don't have a problem asking for a three-year. I think one-year is silly, especially in light of the projects that we're bringing online. But I don't, I don't really think, see this as an option.
I don't think another company could come in and meet this, this cost. So it's a, it's a win-win, bid it out, find out what the lowest is up to. But at the end of the day, they're doing the job right now, so they, they, they know what to do. They've done a good job. How long would it take to bid it out?
Couple of months. Because if it's over $25,000, it's going to have to be sealed.
So what if a company comes in and bids it lower and they're not as good as company? We run into the same old problems that we had before?
Well, no.
We don't have to say the lowest cost big. We can ask for history. What is, what is your, what is your track record for violations and managing sewer districts this size? And if it's abysmal, we know why it's cheaper. I mean, I, I, if we're not, if we're going to write policy and then not follow the policy, it's not really a policy. It's a suggestion.
No, I understand that.
We're allowed to do best value contracts according to our policy. It doesn't necessarily have to be the lowest bidder. And when you're doing closed bids, you can accept or reject all bids.
I support that.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
What's the negative, what, Bob, what do you see as a negative for bidding this out? I know the time, two months, to bid it out.
And I will say it's a lot of work to bid things out. I, I acknowledge that. Doesn't matter. We have a policy.
Great. I understand. I just wanted to know what the negatives were of it, since Bob was saying that, you know, we could do best value here and single source, whatever.
My, my real concern is we get a new, we get a new contractor in February, right in the middle of when we're supposed, when PEI is supposed to be getting help from the operator.
You need to use your mic.
And Bob, you don't have to change. You just have to accept it.
Yeah.
Nobody's saying that you need to make a change. They're saying you got to follow the bid.
Yeah.
I think, I think it would be wise to find out what the...
I'm just answering a question.
Yeah. I think it would be wise to find out what else is out there and just compare. But we're not obligated to change if we feel that it's best to stay with this. But I think it's something we should find out.
Let this thing over because they sure wait. Part of the problem is they waited till the last minute to contact us. And this contract expires December 31st. What are we going to do on January 1st?
So we need to, can we get a month-to-month contract until we get the three bids and until we follow our policy?
All we have to do is just tell them it's our policy and we have to follow the policy.
I mean, there, there's no way that we're going to be able to award a contract by December 31st. It's just not going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen.
I mean, we can ask for a month-to-month if you want.
Or even a 30 or 60-day extension on the current contract.
Yeah, you could, probably want to ask for 60 days, I would, at a minimum.
Again, they are a good organization. They've done a good job. Their performance has been exceptional. They're very responsive. Who else out there would you, you know, would you bid this against?
Oh, we'll, we'll just put it out there. PEI will help us. They'll put it on Builders' Exchange. And, you know, we'll send it out to all the usual suspects. MTA has a huge list, as does Aaron.
So, so do you need a motion to put this out for bid?
Yeah.
Well, I think the first thing you're going to need is, if you're going to do that, is you're going to have to extend the present contract long enough to be able to put it out for bid.
So I will motion that we put the sewer contract up for bid and that we authorize the supervisor to obtain an extension of 60 days on the current contract with Meeden Hunt.
At what rate?
At the current rate.
Okay, we'll see if they'll go for it. Because they're having to do additional testing effective this month.
Excuse me. Negotiating. I don't know yet.
I don't know that I like that, unless you're going to give me a parameter.
What parameter do you need?
$5,900 to $6,500.
Okay.
If I can get it at 59, I will.
I will amend my budget, or my motion to include negotiating up to $6,500.
For 60 days.
For 60 days, on the 60-day extension.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. By Jan? Seconded by? Yeah. Okay, Nabinoy. Petitions. We had a meeting with the, I had a meeting, Ron and I, with the Road Commission. They are going to provide us a $25,000 grant. I did get signatures. We had a local resident on Nabinoy get all signatures on his road except for one, which was quite, quite extraordinary. So in order for us to be able to proceed, we would have to provide, Ron, what was it, a $2,000 down payment to the Road Commission?
$2,500 or $3,500.
I'm sorry?
$2,500 or $3,500. I don't know. It wasn't a ton. It wasn't a lot.
Yeah, I believe it was 20...
I think it's $2,500 because it's 10%. That sounds, that sounds right, just from my...
No, it was, it was 2%.
2%.
2% of the total of 55.
Oh, okay.
So that would be...
$2,200.
Yeah. So, you know, we just rounded up to $2,500. And if we don't move forward with the project, they will refund the money. But just like last year, if they don't have a check from us, they won't put us on the list for the 25 grand. Isn't that what they said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So my, my, my motion is twofold. Cut a check to the Road Commission for $2,500 and...
$2,200.
$2,200 is fine.
Whatever's required. How about that?
Let's refund it.
I honestly don't want that.
Yeah, it was 2% of $5,500. So if it's...
$4,000.
$2,200, that's fine. And then it will cost us an additional $3,500 for our bond counsel to walk us through the process, do all the maps, run us through the public hearing, send out all the notices, just like we did for Phase One, just Phase Two. But that cost, which would probably be payable, I think he told me in February or March, their fee is $3,500 bucks for that service.
What else do you have down here on your motion?
So we wouldn't have to pay that until it's billed, but I would want to seek authorization for that.
So your motion is to cut a check to the Road Commission for $2,200?
And author, and authorize Steve Mann to proceed with the SAD process at a cost of $3,500.
Available in March.
February or March.
Whenever. I'll second that motion.
Discussion, Jan?
Discussion. Does he have any questions, concerns?
Anyone?
Is there any place where the cost is for property owner or...
I'm sorry.
The cost of the property?
Yeah, we'll work that. We'll work that during the process. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Bills. We had one bill that I had to bring in this evening for Mr. Markowitz for $364.42. He got our rather expensive machine, line painting machine working at a cost of $364.42, which is a heck of a deal to fix a $15,000 machine.
And just, just so that everyone knows, this is for parts. Mr. Markowitz is not asking to be paid for his time.
Right. We, we had, we did have, we did need help from a mechanic and he paid a hundred-dollar spot labor that's included in it.
Oh, that's what that is.
Right.
Okay.
But we, we got that broken machine fixed for $364. And God bless you, Mark. Thanks for doing that because the runway looks beautiful.
Thank you.
So I, I move that we pay that bill.
I'd like to modify your motion to simply say we paid that bill from the general fund because this is part of a capital improvement project.
Yes, sir, you're right. So amended. Is there a second?
I'll support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other bills or do we go to the Treasury report? Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we, we do.
Is there a motion to pay the rest of the bills? That are listed? No.
No.
No, we, we moved it. We moved it, so...
Yeah, I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any questions or concerns about the list of the bills?
I'll just explain what is on the list of the bills for those that are here. There are some capital improvement projects listed on here that were approved at our workshops. So they're just simply in an invoice format right now in front of the board. The only new payment on here was for, in here, for the ELA and Financial Services, which is our credit card, for $4,557. So we're essentially approving, approving that bill and most of that bill is from the library.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Treasurer's report, Jan?
Treasurer's report. I want to first apologize. I said when I, when I jumped into this role that you can't have a fragile ego when you do this because at some point you're going to end up apologizing. And here I am. So a month ago, I said that we were closing in on getting banks reconciled on a weekly basis and that I anticipated doing that within the next couple of weeks. And then I got waylaid by this stinking virus that I am still dealing with. So I am not where I told you I would be. So I'm sorry about that. There, there are still issues that I am cleaning up. It was not handed off to me in a nice package with a bow on it. And I'm not blaming anyone. It is what it is. I have cleaned up lots of messes over my lifetime in accounting and I'll get this one cleaned up. It just didn't happen by this meeting as I had intended. And here we are. So I, if I, I have a choice between being transparent and giving you data that is not perfect, I would rather do that than hold back the data and have you wonder why you're not getting data. So bring the slings and arrows. I'm, it's my fault.
I move we accept the Treasury report. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment, please. Three minutes.
Okay. I just have a quick update. While we've been sitting here the last couple of hours, I've gotten emails from the township attorney. I've gotten revised license agreement that I think is representative of what we've been talking about all along. So I think that we're very close to resolving this and then hopefully the kiosks will be back in place shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Public comment? Step right up.
Janice, I appreciate what you said about cleaning things up. As you are aware, the clerk and the treasurer are responsible for keeping accurate financial records. And based on the discussion that we had the last month, the last two months, and what I dug up when I did the scrub on the financial documents, I was very concerned that you guys are making decisions based on erroneous information. You don't have all the right data. There still is $37,000 in Parks invoices that are in the back room. They should have been on this register to be discussed. You guys talked about it at the last meeting, two weeks, last week, the second. The expenditures were approved by the Parks Board. It's in the minutes. Doug was authorized to okay those expenditures. There's two documents or attachments that were missing in the minutes, but, and I think it warranted a call to Beau or one of the other Parks commissioners to get that authorized. They should have been on the invoice register. They should have been discussed at a board meeting and they haven't been. So I, you know, that is not only our law, it's our policy. It's a township policy. The invoices have to be discussed at every meeting. If you have an invoice, it should be on the invoice register.
I, I could correct you. Claims have to be discussed. Invoices do not.
That is a claim.
It's not, it's not a claim until it is approved through the process.
Okay, what's the process? Who approves it?
Has...
You can't. You can't, the board, the Parks Board already approved it. It's in their minutes. That's all.
We can agree to disagree.
Yes, sir.
Hello. My name's Patrick McGinnis. On October 5th, 2023, I walked into the 89th District Court in Sheboygan expecting to tell the prosecuting attorney that I was going to ask for a trial by jury on charges brought for an incident on May 11th, 2023. I wanted a jury trial because I knew that would be the best way to show the public the lies and threats that Bob Kramer and Janet Vance made about me in their statement to the police. This did not happen because the prosecuting attorney said that after three-quarter appearances and offers to take a plea deal, they were dismissing the case completely. Judge Murray Barton approved the decision. What started on May 11th, 2023 was over. Why was this case dismissed? Well, that and other information will come out on a new YouTube channel we are starting. This new channel will be called Tuscora Talks. We feel that there is a need for a channel such as this, a place where people of this township can ask questions and others can answer. The people of Tuscora Township are allowed three minutes during public comments to address the township board, knowing that questions they may ask will never be answered. The township board, on the other hand, can and does during board meetings and board comments, talk for as long as they want. Often during these talks, they say things that may not be the complete truth and at times are outright lies. At the same time, the people of this township have never had a chance to question the correctness of their statements. Now they will have a means to try to hold accountable the elected and appointed members of the township board. Remember, 60%, 60% of this board is appointed, not elected. Tuscora Talks will allow the people to submit questions, ideas, video statements, or other short videos of township interest. Tuscora Talks will also hold the township board accountable for statements made during township meetings and other actions taken by the board. Tuscora Talks first episode will be announced tomorrow via... Tuscorora Talks' first episode will be announced tomorrow via Tuscorora Talks Back, which has over 1,600 members. Anyone who submits material to Tuscorora Talks will not have to fear that the police will recall. Thank you.
Public comment?
My name is Carol Dougie, and today, in many communities, it's election day. And I firmly believe without iota doubt that our elections were stolen. There were many ways that were used to steal the election. One of the ways was using the qualified voter rolls. With that in mind, I want to thank the board for working on real problems like cleaning up the qualified voter roll. This is one of the areas that fraudulent voting has taken place, as we have seen in our last two elections, where dead people voted, where people from other states voted in our elections, where there was abusive absentee ballots. We have a federal and state government running amok because of election fraud. All effort to stop election fraud is appreciated, even though laws have been instituted to criminalize anyone who says there is election fraud. Now work needs to be done to get paper ballots. A major effort needs to be done to get rid of the Dominion voting machines that were used. We need voter ID, which is no longer required in Michigan, and one-day voting. So I want to give a special thanks to Cindy, who works so diligently on cleaning up our voter rolls. And I want to again thank the board for your efforts to clean up the many messes you inherited. Thank you for doing a thankless job. You are not paid enough.
Public comment? Any further public? Yes, sir.
So for the past 27 years, I have participated in Shop the Hero program. It was, it's usually fire department, my department, and our local EMS people. We actually take, they give us a certain amount of children from the school, and we actually take them Christmas shopping. Walmart for years has put the bill on that. It's not just this township, but it's Sheboygan County, Mackinac City. This year, they cut it down, well, about three years ago, they cut, they reduced it by five children. They wanted to cut it again by 50%, so we kind of all got together as a group, and they said, you know, we don't want to cut this program down anymore than, than any more kids than we have to. So we reached out, did a little fundraising. I'd like to thank Indian River Women's Club. They kind of stepped up, helped out. Dawn was the one who actually kind of spearheaded that for me. I also wanted to thank the Indian River Kiwanis Club, Ron kind of spearheaded it for me. Not only we actually meet our monetary goal, but we were actually able to raise the price that each child gets, from $75 to $100. So I thank you, Ron, I thank you, Dawn, and I thank all the women from Indian River Women's Club.
So Gordon, could you speak to what those kids do with that money? Because I've had experience with this when I lived downstate. Some people get a little bit weird about the $75.
So they, when the, Walmart gives us a gift card. They don't actually spend it on themselves. This money is to be spent for their siblings, to make sure that their brothers and their sisters actually get a present for Christmas, as well as, you know, they usually try and get mom and dad. And $75 doesn't take you very far in this day and age. So we've increased that from $75 to $100 now, with the help of Indian River Women's Club, Kiwanis Club, so...
And the Sportsman's Club.
And the Sportsman's Club, so thank you all very, very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks for making it happen.
Thank you.
All right.
You can give Sally a big thank you.
And thank you, Sally. You'll get it. All right.
Excuse me, Chief. Chief, before you leave the podium, could you update us on your new officer?
Yes.
His name, when he's coming, when we'll see him.
So my new officer, Dawson Graves, he is in week... 14? Yeah, 14. No, 13. He's doing great. I've checked in on his with instructors, he's doing very, very well. He just passed his TASER certification, firearms first aid. They're kind of really diving into the bookwork now, and he is due to graduate on December 8th, and there's going to be two from my department, and I've got two openings. I'm assuming Ron wants to go, and Bob, I'm not sure if you want to travel down there for the graduation itself.
When is?
December 8th.
Friday.
Oh, definitely.
So December 8th, we have to be down there by 11:00 AM. So I am looking very forward to getting him.
Bring his pictures.
So when he gets here, I'll actually bring him to the county and introduce him to everybody. Yes, I would love to have my old life back.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Public comment? Public comment is closed. Board comment?
Just real quick, I'm going to take an opportunity to clarify. Often numbers are relative, right? For some people, $20 out of the ATM machine is a lot of money, and for other people, 200 isn't. So when I say it's the skinny season, the money that comes into the township does not come in equitably over 12 months. The vast majority of the money comes in from the tax bills that go out in December. So taking on these additional projects that cause us to front money, wait for money to come back during this season, as, as the balances are tapering off just before the December bills come in, is my concern. And I want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on these things and not letting it get ahead of us. So that's my comment. When I say skinny season, that doesn't mean we're in trouble, I'm just saying it's, it's, we're waiting for those tax dollars to come in from December. Thank you, that's all I have.
Public, board comment?
I have one. Okay. I'm kind of the one that gives the updates, so here we go, okay? Township activities for the last month. Number one, the township's financial department has instituted responsible procedures to make sure every invoice is properly signed by the appropriate party, and these costs are relative to actual township goods and services. This procedure provides a chain of accountability for every department. We've never had that before, where it was actually written down and everybody kind of went by the same rules. So this is very important. We're bringing the DVA into this, we're bringing parks into this, and any, and all our CIPs are going to be following the same procedure. It's all written down, it's a formal procedure, and that's what I like. I like to know it's not going to change because someone else tells you something different. You got it in writing how you got to do it, and this is the way every department is going to do it, and it's great. Number two, the two light projects, like I said, have been completed. This includes the demo project on Frontenac Avenue and Oak Hill Cemetery building restabilization. I'm in the process of gathering, organizing all the required documentation for the State Land Bank Agency for reimbursement. Number three, last week, several board members, along with other volunteers, participated at a food distribution sponsored by the Kiwanis Club, and more than 200 families were serviced. And I would like to extend the community's appreciation to the Kiwanis Club for organizing this effort. Thank you. Number four, as many already know, the township has received a groundwater distribution permit from Eagle, and we are anxiously waiting for the other permits that are necessary to bid out the project. We are currently working with State Senator Demouss and State Representative Cavett to help us move the project forward. Number five, we have received notice that the House of Representatives in Washington, DC, have passed a budget with a $1 million appropriations for Tuscorora Township to enter into the beginning of Phase Three sewer expansion, which mostly will be for the plant. We are now waiting for the Senate approval of this budget. This is great news, but it isn't final yet, but just let you know, they know who we are in Washington, DC, and that's very important. Number six, Charter has received another grant for the internet expansions. It's for $1 million, and they are going to put in another $3 million of their own for internet expansion through northern Tuscorora Township and some adjoining townships as well. This is in addition to the already approved grant that they received for the Grandview Beach area, and I would like to thank all those who sent, submitted letters when I asked them to a few months ago for support of this grant because of your actions a few months ago. Thank you, Chief. It has put a spotlight on our area of Sheboygan County, and we are starting to realize the results of, of our efforts, so thank you very much. Also, PING is also actively putting in fiber optics cable throughout the areas in our township, so services are going to be improving soon. Number seven, the township is promoting a plan for a working relationship with the Road Commission to improve the road ends and public access to the lakes in our township. And we have volunteers that are ready and willing to get out there and start cleaning up these road ends, but we need the Road Commission's cooperation with that. So any little phone calls or a little push for the Road Commission to kind of accept their responsibility for property they own, to help with public access for people who do not live on the lake, we need to keep those, so people that do not have, live on the lake can actually get to their lakes as well, right? So it's very important. Also, number eight, many volunteers have been improving the community with landscaping, planting of daffodils and tulip bulbs. And we have planted at the boat launch, the new docks, the new steps, cemeteries, cooperation park, just to name a few areas, and so thank you for those hardworking volunteers. Number nine, the PFC Justin Peyton VA Medical Clinic had their grand opening, and the facility looks fabulous. We as a community are proud and thankful for this clinic to be located in Tuscorora, and we're very proud it is named after one of our own. Number 10, this is a personal note. Bob Kramer has been asked by Senator Peters to be on a commission to evaluate and approve candidates for the Army, Navy, and Air Force academies that Senator Peters can support. This is a great honor. I don't know of anybody else, and I'm involved with many, many veterans that have received this kind of recognition, and I'd like to thank Lieutenant Colonel Kramer for all his past, present, and future sacrifices to our country. Thank you.
Further board comments?
I don't know if it's a comment, but I was wondering for the chief, have you thought about doing any kind of local active shooting, like maybe demonstration or class or educational thing for our board or anyone that attends a meeting?
I haven't thought of it. We actually just did a big training for the elementary school where all the teachers attended, and we had really good turnout. We had over 25 law enforcement officers at that training. We also did reunification drill with the school. In the event that we ever have to evacuate the school, went through the whole reunification process of how we reunite those children to the buildings. But if there's something that the board wants in particular, we could get something set up.
Well, I took a class through my work, and I was talking to the director of the department who is teaching, like, the active shooter, run, hide, fight, and I didn't know if you had, I know a lot of the officers in the area had attended that. Today, they had TASER training there at the casino, and I didn't, I just thought it would be like a really good thing if we had that in our community, so people, when there is something that unforeseen circumstance happens, instead of, you know, panicking that you, you know, automatically have been through a little bit of a training and had a little insight on how to react and respond. So...
I actually do have two rapid response instructors on my department.
Great, okay. Maybe we could get together and get something together. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just very briefly, I want to thank the clerk and his staff and Jan, and frankly, the rest of this board. Let's talk about money. It's very disheartening to have someone come up to me and say, "Somebody told me we're broke." That's probably the most horrible, irresponsible comment I've heard since I've been in office. So let's review. Last year, at the end of the, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a general fund balance of $820,000. In the last treasurer's report, the entire township had $1.8 million, all in cash. I don't think we're broke. But the reason I wanted to thank you two is despite the fact that we've paid almost a half of a million dollars with no bond as an advance on our sewer system, and we still are well within our required reserves, which require 50% of our general fund expenditures be in the bank, we're almost $200,000 over that. That just didn't happen. These two people and the office staff and others had a lot to play in that, and the fact that we didn't have to go out and get a bond saved the taxpayer and the people that rely on the sewer systems quite a bit of money, especially at today's rate of 5.5% to 6% for a bond. So I just wanted to thank you all very much for that. One other thing, I don't have a law degree. I didn't even get one from Google. I'm not a Google attorney. I'm not a barracks lawyer, not a jailhouse lawyer. We pay a hell of a lot of money to a law firm, who I think is very bright, by the way, and I rely on his counsel, as does the rest of this board. I'll just remind you, social media offers opinions. It's not substitute for professional counsel by a member of the Michigan bar. So that's all the comments I have. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.